Good evening. This is the planning board. Tonight is Monday, January 22, 2018, and it is 7:08 PM. Welcome. Thank you for coming tonight. This meeting is being filmed and recorded by Harbor Media. Thank you, Harbor Media. And I know Sarah wanted to make a brief announcement before we get too far into it.
Yeah, I apologize for wearing sunglasses and a hat, but I am having reoccurring concussion symptoms. So that is why I am looking like this. I'm feeling okay, though.
Thank you, Sarah, for coming. So we're going to start the meeting with a few administrative agenda items. The first is administrative reports. Mary, do you have any administrative reports?
No.
Okay, none. The next item is the review and adoption of minutes from previous meetings. We don't have minutes to review. Great. And we're not going to discuss the minutes. So that takes care of that.
I will.
The next item on our agenda this evening is the public hearings, proposed amendments to the Hingham zoning bylaw, Section 3A ban on marijuana establishments, the regulation of the sale and consumption of marijuana not medically prescribed, definitions related to marijuana not medically prescribed, and Section 5H registered marijuana dispensaries. So before we get started, I want to -- I would like to outline the process that we're going to follow tonight. The first thing I want to do is make sure that everyone here tonight and watching -- those watching from home understand where we are in this process. For that, we're lucky to have our Director of Community Planning, Mary Savage Dunham, and Special Town Council for Real Estate and Land Use, Susan Murphy, here with us tonight. And they are going to give all of us a presentation on the status of the state laws and regulations of the use of marijuana in the Commonwealth and here in Hingham. And that -- they will -- this will make sure that we all understand where we have been and where we are now, which will set the stage for understanding what lies before us tonight, specifically the public hearings for the four warrant articles that I just listed. Then what we'll do is we'll move through each proposed warrant article individually. We'll ask Mary and Susan to address them one at a time with us. And we'll walk through and we will explain the article and what it accomplishes. And then after each one is presented, we'll take public comment. Then we'll move to board comments and questions. Depending on how things proceed tonight, we will aim to take public comment and address all four warrant articles. But I want to make it clear right now that I anticipate we will continue these discussions into a second meeting. That being said, oh, I also want to mention we have handouts out front. There's handouts of the presentation, the warrant articles, a chart. You're welcome to come forward and take what you like. They're also, if you're watching at home, they're also available on the planning board's webpage under proposed bylaw amendments. There's a section where you can find all of these things if you want to look at them at home. With that, I will ask Mary and Susan to begin their presentation.
Great, thank you.
Here's your remote if you want to start.
Oh, thank you. For anyone who has been following this since the board started discussing this matter a few months ago, a lot of the slides are going to be repetitive. There is some new information, but it's also meant to provide information to anyone who may have just become aware of the discussion and also a refresher, since it's been a month or two since the board has discussed this. I don't know, Jen, if you want to talk about this. The presentation is a brief overview of the law, the current status in Hingham of zoning related to medical and recreational marijuana, and then the proposed warrant articles related to marijuana as the chair just described. But does not discuss personal use of recreational marijuana, which has its own regulations under state law that are outside of the zoning process.
Right, thank you.
So the timeline, just to recap, was November of 2012 is when medical marijuana was approved by ballot in the state. At that time, 60% of Hingham voters supported the ballot question for medical marijuana. At the 2013 annual town meeting, the voters approved a temporary moratorium to allow time for regulations to come and to be promulgated so that the town would know how it should proceed with a local zoning bylaw. And so then, in 2014, at the annual town meeting, a zoning bylaw regulating medical marijuana treatment centers, also known as registered marijuana dispensaries, was adopted, and that is in effect in Hingham today. However, there have been no applications to the state for registered marijuana dispensaries, which is medical marijuana, in Hingham to date. So this is the recreational marijuana timeline. November 2016 ballot question and almost an opposite result in Hingham. With respect to the recreational marijuana, 57% of Hingham voters voted against the ballot question. So we had 60% of Hingham voters in favor of medical marijuana, 57% of Hingham voters against recreational marijuana. In December of 2016, there was a delay in the implementation of the act by the legislature. In April of 2017, so last year's town meeting, town meeting adopted a temporary moratorium that expires this June 30. So if no action is taken by town meeting, the moratorium goes away. There is no regulation of marijuana establishments in Hingham. And therefore, they can proceed under any related type of use in Hingham. So if they're retail, they could be a retail store with no regulation, no other regulation. In July, the legislature passed a more comprehensive revision of the act, and that set up the Cannabis Control Commission and put in a lot of new provisions related to local authority and local control, which is what now the town is proceeding with. On December 1 of 2017, a couple, a month and a half ago, the planning board submitted its proposed warrant articles for discussion to the Board of Selectmen. Those are the articles that the chair listed a few minutes ago. March 15, on December 21, the Cannabis Control Commission issued draft regulations, which we will touch upon to some extent in the discussion tonight. On March 15 is the deadline for the initial, the final initial regulations. That is before town meeting, but after the majority, if not all, of the town meeting processes in Hingham are completed and that the advisory committee has completed or is near completing its work for the warrant. April 1 is when the first applications may be filed with the CCC. April 23 is Hingham's town meeting, and June 1 is when the CCC will begin issuing licenses. Although with an April 1 application deadline, there's not likely that a lot is going to get through the process by June 1. But that's the first date they can begin issuing licenses. So the act created Mass General Laws, Chapter 94G. So that's the statute under which the town has to comply in connection with doing any of its regulations. The Cannabis Control Commission, as I mentioned, was created by that act. And their primary responsibility is promulgating the regulations and then licensing the marijuana establishments. And we'll talk about what constitutes a marijuana establishment. Local communities have some authority to regulate recreational marijuana through general bylaws, zoning bylaws, and possibly through health regulations. For example, the Board of Health already has a regulation in place that regulates smoking of all types of products, tobacco, marijuana, any type of public smoking. The definitions that you're going to hear a lot of as we discuss it are, and there's just summaries here in the packet. There are longer definitions actually in the statute. But marijuana itself, which is the plant, marijuana accessories, which is equipment, products, devices, materials intended for use in planting, growing, packaging, and, you know, ingesting or inhaling marijuana. Marijuana products are products that have any extracts or the marijuana leaf in it, the marijuana oils, anything that is created using the marijuana plant. And then there are many types marijuana establishments. The statute specifically calls out cultivators, testing laboratories, manufacturers, retails, or other types. And one of the items I'm going to mention for the board today is in the draft regulations, the CCC have actually defined additional types of establishments. And, you know, the board may want to consider how to address these other defined establishments in the board's proposed regulations. Today, the situation is that Hingham was a quote-unquote "no" community. And what that means for the purposes of the discussion for the town is that the majority of the voters voted against the ballot question. 57% voted against the ballot question. So the terminology that has evolved in the state is to refer to those communities that had a majority of voters vote against the ballot question as "no" communities. There's a temporary moratorium in place in the town through June 30 of 2018. And I alluded to the relevance of the moratorium deadline. And then, at the time, there were no, there were a lot of unknowns as to what was going to happen with the law and the regulations in the spring of 2017. So there are a lot of moratoriums that were adopted across the state by a lot of communities. The revised act, as I mentioned, provides substantially more information and addressed a number of local concerns. And that's, and that's under which the town is proceeding, the board's proceeding. So what actions may Hingham take? Hingham may ban or limit the number or type of establishments, regulate the time, place, and manner of the operation of the establishments to the extent they're permitted in the town, impose local tax on sales of marijuana. And that would be handled with a, at the Board of Selectmen's level. In fact, there is a warrant article proposed by the Board of Selectmen, which is not a zoning article, to address a local tax. The town could consider allowing onsite consumption. That requires a ballot vote to allow it. So it's prohibited under state law unless there's an actual ballot vote to allow it. So right now, that, as far as I know, that's not permitted in any municipality in Massachusetts. I'm not aware of any municipalities having a ballot vote to actually allow onsite consumption to date. And then the last is regulate marijuana in public buildings, you know, those types of use regulations for substances. This chart, obviously, no one can read up there on the screen, but there is a copy of the chart that is available up front if anyone's looking for a copy. And this just breaks down pretty much, you know, a lot of what I've described in verbiage is broken down as to yes or no, depending on what, how the town chooses to answer questions related to allowing or not allowing marijuana establishments. There's a decision tree as to what needs to be made. The yellow are zoning-related. The green is both general and zoning bylaw-related. So that's how you read that chart. And now I'm going to hand it over to Mary.
Thank you. So what might recreational marijuana establishment uses look like from a zoning perspective if there were no ban in place? Certainly, retail is what comes to mind. For most people, a marijuana retailer is an entity licensed to purchase and deliver marijuana and marijuana products from marijuana establishments and to deliver, sell, or otherwise transfer marijuana and marijuana products to marijuana establishments and to consumers. From a zoning perspective, what types of details could the bylaw take into consideration? Perhaps parking demand, patron management on the outside? Is there adequate room for queuing or for the customer volume anticipated? Signage and potentially buffers or setbacks from other uses? Another use is processing or extraction. This would be, for example, a marijuana product manufacturer. This type of use might be considered to be one of the industrial class of uses of marijuana establishments. And I think it's important to think broadly about marijuana establishments. And again, just referencing the fact that it's not necessarily a retail store or a retail shop. There's also cultivation uses. A marijuana cultivator is an entity licensed to cultivate, process, and package marijuana, to deliver marijuana to marijuana establishments, and transfer marijuana to other marijuana establishments, but not to consumers. So more of a wholesaler type of entity or perhaps even an agricultural use. That's one of the questions for the board to think about in their deliberations. There's a provision for craft marijuana cultivator cooperative. Again, one of the considerations for this is, could this be allowed as a home occupation? Is it, it sounds like it's agricultural, but it's smaller scale. Would it fit into our home occupation regulations? So that's, that's important, certainly, that distinction from the large-scale cultivator. Delivery services. Interestingly, there is a provision that no city or town shall prohibit the transportation of marijuana or marijuana products or adopt an ordinance or bylaw that makes the transportation of marijuana or marijuana products unreasonably impracticable. However, a delivery service, it could be like a taxi service for zoning. The board may want to think about potential impacts from increased vehicular activity. How is it handled? Are they licensed? This board doesn't license those types of businesses, but perhaps another board might need to. Hours of operation and location. Accessories. Marijuana accessories are equipment, products, devices, or materials of any kind that are intended or designed for use in planting, propagating, cultivating, growing, harvesting, manufacturing, compounding, converting, producing, processing, preparing, testing, analyzing, packaging, repackaging, storing, containing, ingesting, inhaling, or otherwise introducing marijuana into the human body. This type of business could be found, perhaps, in the industrial zone as a wholesale or larger-scale business or perhaps as a retail use. It's not restricted to one particular zone. Signage. As a retail use or any use, our bylaw speaks to signage. This board could certainly look to modify the signage regulations. However, the board cannot impose a standard for signage that's more restrictive than those applicable to retail establishments that sell alcoholic beverages within the city or town. So again, it's that reasonable restriction on regulation. Onsite consumption, we touched on briefly. It's prohibited unless permitted by an express ballot vote. And we have not had that yet. Special events. Should we or another entity within the town be thinking about issuance of additional licenses for, you know, special events or activities within town? So really, I think that the point of all of those slides, even though we did just go through them very quickly, is to say, we refer to it as recreational or retail marijuana, but it's not that compartmentalized. There's really a lot of different potential aspects to the use that the boards need to consider as they review their potential bylaw amendments. What actions are needed if Hingham wishes to regulate marijuana establishments? The town needs to amend the zoning bylaw by town meeting in order to have regulations in place prior to the June 30 expiration of the moratorium. That's why we're having this, this conversation at this juncture. Zoning bylaw amendments should be coordinated with proposed general bylaw amendments and proposed changes to other town regulations. We do have copies of the two warrant articles proposed by the Board of Selectmen up on the handout table and certainly on our webpage. That's not the focus of tonight's discussion, but the planning board is coordinating with the selectmen to the extent needed. Zoning amendments and any proposed changes to Hingham's general bylaws or other town regulations must reference and be consistent with the act and the Cannabis Control Commission's regulations. We have mentioned and will talk about in greater depth the regulations. The initial draft came out December 21, 2017. There's a copy on the planning board's webpage, certainly the Cannabis Control Commission's webpage. And they certainly are more expansive than the amount of information that this board had before you when you drafted your, the language that's in front of us tonight. And a special counsel, Murphy, mentioned the final regulations aren't due out until March. So to a certain degree, the board is working on these regulations, but perhaps not having all the final details to consider.
Thank you, Mary, and thank you, Susan, for giving us that comprehensive review and sense of where the state is and where we are as a town. And then just to back up on what we did as a planning board in the fall and November, we had several meetings where we took public comment and we talked about and got up to speed with the landscape ourselves. And we received a lot of public comment. We received a lot of written public comment. A lot of folks came to the meetings and stood up and spoke and gave their opinion. And as a result, what we decided as a board was that we heard a couple of things. We heard people strongly in favor of a ban. And we also heard people saying, let, let the people decide. So as you can see on the next slide, the first zoning amendment that we proposed is a ban on marijuana establishments. And that is what would be put before the voters, the people at town meeting. And as Mary has already mentioned, the Board of Selectmen has also put forth a ban. So the idea there is that the ban, we are putting it forth. We're going to discuss it. We want to hear more from you tonight. And then we'll discuss what we're, what we're thinking on that at this point. But as of December 1, that was sort of the first, what we were putting forward first. In other words, put forward the ban. And then, as you can see in number two on the slide, in the, in the event that the ban does not pass at town meeting, we need to be prepared with a strong regulation that would govern the time, place, and manner of the operation of marijuana establishments and of any business dealing in marijuana accessories within the town of Hingham. And then, third, in the event that the ban doesn't pass at town meeting and our proposed time, place, and manner regulation doesn't pass at time meeting, we have another proposed warrant article that would at least put in some clarification and definitions and limits short of a ban and short of regulations. And then the last one, the fourth one that we put forward, is, it's quite simply just updating the medicinal, the medical marijuana bylaw to reflect the changes in state law. So that's not a substantive change. That's just reflecting the, the change in the statute at the state level that we need to reflect in our bylaw, regardless of 1 through 3. So that's where we are. That's sort of the high level. Hard to do at too high level because it's a pretty robust topic. But from there, as I said before, what we want to do now is start to work through each of these proposed warrant articles. And what we'll do is, well, I think on the ban, we'll probably ask Susan to walk through the language of the ban. Then we'll take public comment. And then we will speak about it and ask questions as a board.
It's in the right order, okay. So the, the board has before you, this is the same language that was submitted to the selectmen on December 1, available on the zoning board's website. And I believe you said, Mary, there's copies available.
Correct.
On section 3A of the zoning bylaw is the use section of the zoning bylaw. Let's flip into that. So Section 3A has, on page 15, has an intro paragraph. And then it refers to the chart, which is on the subsequent pages, which breaks down the uses by types, residential, commercial, et cetera, and by zoning district and indicates what's permitted and prohibited. Typically, under zoning, any use that's not specifically permitted is prohibited. So if you don't have a use listed in your table, typically, it's assumed it's prohibited. What's different about the recreational marijuana is that it's not like it's a restaurant or it's a, you know, toxic waste dump or it's a specific use in and of itself. It's, it's a, any, it's all the different businesses that Mary described in the PowerPoints. It could be a retail shop. It could be a farming operation. It could be a manufacturing operation. So if there was no mention of marijuana in the Hingham zoning bylaw and someone wanted to open a retail store and their product was marijuana products, they would just look where retail stores are allowed in Hingham. And so that, so we need to approach it a little differently if the town wishes to ban or even with respect to time, place, and manner. So what is proposed is in Section 3A in the introductory paragraphs. Originally, those were not numbered. It's just, it's just set forth with no sub-paragraph numbering. So what's proposed is to take the first paragraph starting with the word "no building structure or land." That would be paragraph 1. The second paragraph that starts "permitted uses" would be paragraph 2. And then if adopted by town meeting, the ban would be paragraph 3 under this section on page 15. And it would read, "In accordance with Mass General Laws, Chapter 94G, Section 3A 2, all types of marijuana establishments, as defined in Massachusetts General Laws, Chapter 94G 1, and may, and as may otherwise be defined by Massachusetts law or regulation, to include without limitation all marijuana cultivators, marijuana testing facilities, marijuana product manufacturers, marijuana retailers, onsite consumption of marijuana at a marijuana retailer location, and any other types of licensed marijuana-related businesses, including businesses dealing in marijuana accessories, and the conducting of any such activity for commercial purposes by whichever name used shall be prohibited within the town of Hingham. This prohibition shall not be construed to prohibit registered marijuana dispensaries to the extent permitted under this zoning bylaw." This is, language is similar to other communities that have already acted on bans. It is, at least the substance of it, is identical to what the Board of Selectmen have proposed for the general bylaw. There are some differences in how it's worded for a general bylaw versus zoning. And so this is, this is how it's worded. I would say, you know, just before you begin discussion, that now, having seen the draft regulations, I might actually recommend a change to it, which is in the, 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, 6th line. That starts retailers, comma, and so it says, "onsite consumption of marijuana at a marijuana retailer location." At the time this was drafted, no one knew how the Cannabis Control Commission was going to handle it. The Cannabis Control Commission also talks about, if permitted in a municipality through a ballot vote, the social, I want to get the right name for it. Marijuana social consumption operators. So it's a type of retailer, but it's different. So I, I would almost recommend that "at a marijuana retailer location" is almost limiting. And to make it more broad, that that clause could just be deleted if the board wishes it to be. it to be more broad. So onsite consumption anywhere in a commercial setting is a change that I might recommend. But that's—that's what—this is what's been sent up to the Selectmen by the Board and is—is up, I guess, for the discussion now.
Thank you, Susan.
And I'll just clarify the references to 94—Chapter 94G, Section 3A2. This is where the relevance of Hingham being a no community in the lingo that's developed around this is relevant. Because Hingham was a no community, the statute only provides for ban through town meeting vote. So there is no mechanism for a ballot vote or any other way to address it if the town wants to ban it. The appropriate way in Hingham with a town meeting is through town meeting.
Having gone through this proposed warrant article, I would ask if there is anyone here who wishes to make public comment or to speak on this. I will just set the ground rules for public comment before we proceed. If you wish to ask a question or make a comment, please step up to the microphone to do so because we are being videoed so that everyone can hear and state your name and address for the record, and then address your question or comment to me, the Chair. Please do not engage in personalities. And if—if it starts to take a long time and you want to wait in line, that's fine. But we're hoping to get to everyone here tonight on all of these matters. So is there anyone that wishes to start? Thanks. Thank you.
Good evening, Lynn Olson from the Hingham Police Department. Law enforcement feels that the legalization of marijuana has been one of the biggest changes we're going to face over the past several decades. We understand the many cultural changes and the changing of values and norms within a society. We understand that the voters have spoken. They've decided on a law. But I believe that as—in talking with other law enforcement officers in communities, we still feel that there's a lot of unidentified problems and results that could come about with some of this. I believe in the Legislations Act to get this passed, it was strongly marketed. We see shows on TV that run constantly about marijuana being the new miracle cure. And I really think that there's a—an education out there that the vast majority of people don't truly understand what this marijuana industry is about and all the byproducts of the marijuana industry that are out there, that people are marketing as father's clothing, everything. It's—it's become a huge industry. If you have a chance to review the medical marijuana industry, 60% to 80% of the sales are in edibles, not necessarily the marijuana weed as we thought that we knew as children or kids. And I think that's something that the public needs to get more educated about. We're concerned that as the law moves in, there's a lot of different avenues that cause problems. There's too many unknowns in this. We needed to find the definitions. And I've stated this before, I think Hingham has this great ability to do the right thing. A lot of people volunteer. We take a conservative action on how we do things, and I think this is one of the things that best suits us. We know that there's a law. I think by having a ban put in place and putting in all these articles for us to sit back and examine it a little bit—we shouldn't be the testing zone. Let other—it's other communities move forward. We can spend the time—we teach our kids to make smart choices, to take your time, look at all the different alternatives, and then make a good decision. And I think this is a perfect case where there's so many unknowns. The state hasn't completely put out their rules. Things are changing very rapidly in this industry. We need to put—the brakes on it for the county of Hingham. We need to implement the ban, think about what we're doing, get time to do research, get factual data out there. And I hope that the community researches this. And I can assure you that as we move forward this, I realize as the head law enforcement officer, it's my job to enforce the laws and to abide by the law. It's also my job to sort of steer committees or talk to people about some of the problems that we see that could affect a community. It doesn't mean—I take no position on this as far as that, but I think it's my job to identify those areas and bring them to a committee where you can make an educated decision on it. So I do support the ban. Thank you.
Anyone else like to speak on this warrant article? Please. Sure, Mr. Watson.
Dear Lieutenant, 10291 Rockland Street. I sympathize with the Chief's concerns, but it bothers me to say that in our state, we prohibit our residents from doing what is legal statewide. I think we should trust people to make their own judgment. But if we do not do—I—excuse me. But without the ban, I do think we need clear regulation of time, place, manner of usage, as we do for alcohol, as we do to a degree for cigarettes, you know? And we have places that sell both, nardos, you know, every place. And kids don't very often go in the package stores and buy. Sometimes adults buy for them and they shouldn't. But I mean, some of the problems with alcohol, I'm sure we'll have, but we have some handle on them. So I think the main thing is to treat it as another pleasurable substance which could be misused, try to prevent the misuse, and try to give some direction. And specifically, I would suggest that the retail sale and consumption, not the manufacturing and packing, et cetera, be allowed but wherever similar retail is allowed. It's a package store, in package stores, in a drugstore, properly regulated. And that's easy to say because it's a lot of work on the Chief's part, but I do think we shouldn't be judging what other people should do, but we should be responsibly regulating where and how it's done. And if there's a demand for it and there's one more store in the center that doesn't business in the square, good, properly regulated. Thank you.
Who else?
Lady Spurges.
Oh, yeah. We're going to be in a bunch.
I'm in the big room. You sure you want to go first?
No, I don't have a prepared statement. Go ahead.
Oh, all right.
Thank you.
Hello. Bonard Fage, 101 Wampe Tech Road. I'm back. Oops. My free Hingham phone—pen here. First off, I want to say for the record that I have no interest whatsoever in any commercialization of cannabis, period. I'm not here shilling for anybody. I could care less about the shops. My issue here is personal freedom. Hold on. I believe that cannabis as nature is a wonder product. I believe this is all about commerce and people being able to purchase and use this product in a safe, legal way so that they know exactly what they are purchasing. I can't just in good conscience sit here or allow Hingham to treat cannabis users as second-class citizens. And that's what part of this is about. This is basically taking one group of people and saying, "Nay, neigh, neigh. We don't want to—you know, we don't want to have you in our town. We don't want to have you purchase products in our town." So you're the Planning Board. You're the people who have to listen and the Selectmen to what the actual voters say. I would also like to point out that the question in 2016 was not, "Should we allow recreational sales in Hingham?" The question was, "Should we allow recreational sales in the state?" Two totally different issues. Now that—in—the people who got it passed, they won. It is now legal in the state. So that shouldn't be the question that the—are our legislators, when they did this this mulligan thing and they backtracked and they undermined the will of the people, you know, allowing—putting you guys sort of in between the caca and the shovel, because you obviously are hearing that already from everybody. I'd also like to bring—I'd like to mention Glenn, and maybe Glenn can come up here and tell you about LEAP, which stands for Law Enforcement Against Prohibition. I'm sure he's pretty familiar with that. And there's also—these are cops. These are people who have been involved in cannabis prohibition for years, and they are 100% against it now. What we want is—we want to—basically, we want a town, we want to be able to buy a product, just like you do alcohol, just like you do anything else—beer, wine, stuff like that. I don't know—you know, when I hear the fear mongering going on, it's just—it's mind-boggling. You know, I—I'm not sure if these anti-cannabis prohibitionists think that we're going to have pot zombies walking around downtown Hingham, you know, stoned out of their brains. Is it going to be like something from, you know, the Night of the Living Dead? That's—seems to be the—the way they're trying to promote it or pursue it. Hold on a second. I'd also like to point out—hold on, wait a minute. The same people who worked their tails off, myself being one of them—and I have a pretty big tail—to get recreational cannabis on the ballot, and we won. We are now gearing up for future boycotts, and this is going to directly affect the town of Hingham and any other town that decides it wants to go no recreational, because you're going to—and there's going to be an app for it. It's already—from what I understand, it's already in the works. And you have yet to hear from the business people in this town, the business associations, who are going to be able to go online and say, "Well, this is the amount of business we lost because people won't come here." And we're actively saying, "If you come to this town or any town that doesn't allow recreational cannabis, we're not going to do business." So they haven't spoken up yet, but this is going to hit them right in the pocketbook. And it's going to be awfully interesting to watch the people go right by Hingham, either to Hull or to Waymouth or anyplace else and do business. And specifically—and it's not just Hingham, it's these other towns that are the anti-cannabis towns. All right. I think—I believe when we look back in this period of time—we'll—time, we will be asking ourselves, "What were we thinking?" You know, the people are against the lottery. Look at the amount of money the lottery has come to. There are certain things that responsible people can can use, and this is a far better alternative, and it would be much better for the people. I mean, how many package stores? We've got 40 package stores and places in this town that sell alcohol? You know, most people want alcohol—want cannabis to be regulated in the same way as alcohol. And although it's a different product, it causes far, far less social problems than alcohol, which we've all grown up with, and most people can use it responsibly. And I won't even talk about the therapeutic things that this stuff does, between—for arthritis, for liver issues, for kidney issues, for pancreas issues, for just all-around pain. I would also like to say, if we didn't have opioids, SSRIs, MAO inhibitors, benzodiazepines, amphetamine derivative drugs, the pharmacot—the pharmac—the—what's the word? Pharmacopeia, excuse me, of man-made, chemically manufactured, mind- and mood-altering anti-anxiety and deadly pain management products, people would be growing cannabis like tomatoes. No one has ever overdosed and died from cannabis. It's an impossibility. That's a fact. So when we hear that—I mean, I—I appreciate what these—the—the care people are doing in substance abuse, but they are—they are focusing their energy on the wrong place. You know, it—the gateway drug theory has pretty much been destroyed. I mean, it's—you know, when Glenn and other people say, "Well, we should wait and we should see how it pans out." Colorado has been doing it. California has been doing it. I mean, these are all places where they've had recreational cannabis. The world hasn't ended. People have been—and—and what I'm really kind of surprised at is, why do people have such a problem with allowing other people to do something and use a product that makes themselves feel good and that they enjoy using and don't harm anybody? So what else? What else? Let's see. Well, I like the delivery. I'm thinking of an Uber pot. Is that what you guys were talking about? Is it going to be like an Uber pot service? Because that's something that I just heard about, you know, with this delivery. I kind of think it's crazy. As far as the smoking indoors and stuff, I believe Hingham already has really strict inside-smoking business laws. Am I correct?
Or smoking—I don't—
The Board of Health.
Yeah.
Okay. So I mean, it's so that, you know, we have all these different what-if—what if an elephant falls out of the sky, you know, and somebody sm—I mean, there's just so many—there's so much confusion here, and I think that that confusion, all it does is lead people to say, "We just don't want it." And I think—and as I've said before, if it doesn't go this time, if it gets banned, it will be on the ballot. Eventually, we will find a way to put it on the actual town people's ballot. But in the meantime, I mean, why not—why not try to gear things towards, like I say, towards treating it like alcohol? Okay? I think—I had some other stuff here, but half the time I can't read because my eyes are losing it. Uh, what else? What else? What else? Let's see, cigarettes. Da-da-da-da-da. Nah. Well, I guess that's it for now until somebody else speaks and I'll remember something else.
Thank you.
Oh, and I'm also—the people watching this, I'm asking you, do your own research. Go online, find out why cannabis was made.
Address your comments to me.
Well, no, but I'm addressing them to the people.
Right, and I'm telling you, you address your comments and questions to me.
Okay. All right.
Thank you.
Can I address them to you, to rest of the people? I wasn't a lawyer, so I don't know.
I am. Go ahead, please.
Hi, good evening. Diane Denapoli, 16 Gardner Street in Hingham. I wasn't planning on commenting, but now I feel I should. I—I, again, don't feel anyone is being treated like a second-class citizen. I think when you look at the CDC reports, that 1 in 5 adult deaths in America are related to alcohol. I think, you know, again, comparing marijuana—it's just like alcohol. There's nothing problematic or wrong—isn't a great analogy, and two wrongs don't make a right. So I think we just need to—I'd just like to agree completely with Glenn that we need to just pump our brakes, wait and see what happens in other places. I think it would be a good—very good idea to set up a task force to actually study what is happening in other communities, Colorado and California. I have done research and I have seen statistics, like the amount of children going to emergency rooms because they're eating edibles and having their stomach pumped and having serious repercussions. So I would want people from both sides to join this task force, study it, see the pros and the cons, if there are any. And—but I am strongly in favor of the ban, and I think we should study it and move forward cautiously like we do in Hingham. Thank you for all your work you've done on this so far. Thank you.
Thank you. Please, yeah.
Duane O. Sir, 74 Thaxter Street. Just so you know, I do have an interest in a facility that's out in Oregon, which just recently passed in Oregon. They had their sting operations for all the pot locations, and by the way, 0.0 were sold to anybody under the age of 21. So they were 100%, did not have any problems. And from what I can see is the state of Massachusetts is following a lot of the Oregon laws. So hopefully, that would be the case here, too. As far as the ban goes, I have to agree. We are 21 and older. It is seed to sale. If you find somebody under 21 and they have the packaging, you will now know where they bought it. You can't say that about alcohol. You can't say that about cigarettes. If you find somebody under the age of 21 or—I don't—I don't know what tobacco is these days, it might be 21. You can't tell where they got it. But if you find—that—even if it's in the package, so what? Alcohol, you can't tell where they got it. You can slap them on the wrist. They're under 21, they're in college, okay, they get a fine. If they're in school, maybe they can't do the plays, they can't do—you know, in high school, they can't do the sports. But you don't know where they got it. The point is, here, you're controlling it, seed to sale, where they got it, who they got it from, and you're allowing adults to enjoy something that is legal in the state of Massachusetts. And I think that that's the point here. This is a—there's no difference between here and Waymouth. There's not a magic line. There's not a magic line between here and Hull. So if somebody can go three feet over the border, buy it, bring it back and smoke it —or eat it—or drink it even, because they do make drinks. I just find it incredible to think that by not having it in a town, you're actually going to prevent it from being here. I think that's—that's crazy talk. And oh, by the way, we don't get any of the tax money that comes along with this. So including an extra 3% on any of the sales here, if you allow retail sales here. That's all I'm going to say, but thank you. And I do appreciate your position on this and your position on this also. I—I do understand that there are both sides in this. And it has been illegal for a long time, and now it's not. So oftentimes, with change, there are people who are on both sides, so I do appreciate both sides. Thank you.
Hold on, see if anybody else wants to go before you, again. Anybody else? No? Okay, Mr. Fage.
Bonard Fage, 101 Wampe Tech Road. Again, the fact remains that in states where they have medical marijuana—I mean, there's been several reports, and these are from legitimate sources, saying that the amount of deaths from opioid overdoses has gone down somewhere around 25% to 30%. They have also found where marijuana is legal in different states, that the amount of painkillers being prescribed has gone down dramatically as well. So I mean, nobody—kids going to—to an emergency room for—you know, for—for cannabis overdose, they are few and far between. And what some people call an overdose—I mean, we just had an instance of somebody apparently at one of the schools in—in the town. It was a big deal. Nobody died. There were three or four kids. I mean, these—I mean, let's be honest. When we were all kids— So, I mean, nobody, kids going to, to an emergency room for, you know, for, for cannabis overdose, they are few and far between, and what some people call an overdose, I mean, we just had an instance of somebody apparently at one of the schools in, in the town, it was a big deal. Nobody died, there were three or four kids. I mean, these, I mean, let's be honest, when we were all kids, it was relatively easy to get alcohol. Let's, let's be clear here, these kids probably, if they had the chance, they would've gotten alcohol. These kids are now eating Tide Pods. I mean, this is, this is just ridiculous. And, and at this stage of the game, if you have legal cannabis, you do not force people to go to the black market. You know, all, all a prohibition is gonna do is gonna keep the active black market going in different areas, and there's gonna be no tax revenue from it, and I'm not even gonna really address the amount of money that, you know, that the people are all making now from tax revenue. And the other thing that I would like to point out is that cannabis is being used as some sort of a method or some sort of a vehicle in order to fund opioid addiction. It's not cannabis that started these addictions. And, and the fact of the matter remains is cannabis, in many ways, is the cure when it comes to pain management. So if we could, if we could get our heads out from under this reef of madness fog that, you know, has been perpetrated on the public since 1939, and has had hundreds of billions of dollars and, uh, thrown, you know, thrown at it, you know, maybe we can come to sort of a consensus. And like I say, again, treat it like alcohol. If it's in the town, you people then can, you know, decide where it is, but a lot of these things, they're all basic, I, I call them red herrings, in all the little nuances, and, uh, so, take that in consideration.
Thank you. Anything further? With that, then, I would suggest we start to just talk about it as a board, and if we have, if the board has any questions or comments at this time.
Um, I have a, I guess, it's not directly related, but it's a clarification question, I guess, for, either for Mary or for Susan. The schedule that we're working off of now with the draft regulations and the, was that established by last July's legislation, or were those dates established by the ballot vote?
The, the current date where there's a, I believe, March 15th deadline for the final initial regulations to come out, that was established in the July 2017 Act.
'Cause I think, I mean, that, that's sort of the frustrating part for a lot of us, is that we're trying to figure this out, and we don't even know what it's going to be, right? Um, the, the change in regulations that we got just before Christmas, I mean, by my count, there were 11 different definitions of marijuana establishments. So that's fairly different than, than what we were expecting before, right? So, so we have no idea what these reg, well, that's not fair, we have an idea, but we don't really know what we're dealing with.
Right.
And yet, and yet, we have to make these decisions now, and the town, and the town has to make those decisions at town meeting.
I was at a program a couple of months ago where there were a couple of members of the CCC on the panel, along with an advocate and some city of Boston officials who were opposed. It was a pretty good cross-section. But it was interesting, because an aide to the state senator was talking things about, "Oh yeah, the Board of Selectment in no towns can adopt bans," and saying all these things. And finally, I got up and I said, "Clearly, even the people in the legislature working on this don't understand the law, because that's not the case, that the Board of Selectment have the authority to do anything, and the timeframes do not work with the majority of the towns that have town meetings in the Commonwealth, and there seems to just be a fundamental understanding by the powers that be, who are making these laws, about how to make the process, and part of the reason why there is a rush to ban or moratorium is because the legislation set up timeframes that were not reasonable to expect towns to be able to do the studies and come up with." So those people who are on the community side, work with communities, are echoing what you're saying, but the reality of the situation is, that's what the statute says, those are the timeframes, and so all this board can do is make recommendations to town meeting based on the information you have available to you. Um, and John Cofflin and I can give you our best legal opinions, but we can't say, "Yes, it will be interpreted this way if there's a challenge," or we can just base it on, try to make analogous situations with, with respect to zoning amendments and zoning law, and, and give you our kind of educated, kind of opinions or guesses based on, on what we know, which is the same exact information you have.
Well, I've been following how other communities are handling this, and I think we're doing, go, doing exactly the same thing. So Hanover, Hanover, for example, their Board of Selectment advanced, um, general bylaw, and then the zoning amendment as well. So other communities are doing what, what we're doing.
Mm-hmm.
They're just doing it a little earlier. So I think we're heading down the right path. So thank you, Susan, for all your research and work on it.
Sure.
Um, I just have a couple of questions. Susan, I think they're for you. The, um, explain what you said about the onsite consumption. Right now, it's not allowed, but that might change, is that what you're saying?
Right. There was, again, this is another one where the press potentially not understanding, because there was a lot of discussion coming out of the fact that the draft regulations provide for this, uh, social consumption operator, which is like, a marijuana cafe is another term for it, and saying, "Oh, there, you know, you're gonna be allowed to go in and sit down like, you know, coffee cafe and get..." But the underlying statute, which the regulations cannot change, state that onsite consumption, so you buy it there, you do it like fast food, you know, you go there, you sit down, you enjoy, um, that is prohibited in Massachusetts unless an individual committee, community, I'm sorry, has a ballot vote that says, "We will allow onsite consumption in our community." So notwithstanding that it's in the regulations as a potential type of use, they're looking, I think, prospectively, because one of the requirements, and we can talk about this in more detail when we talk about time, place, and matter, one of the requirements of getting a license is that your proposed use is consistent with the local bylaws and the local regulations. And so if it has never been voted to allow it in the town, then the state cannot give a license for it. So at this point in time, even if Hingham rejected all, the town meeting rejected all regulation of ma, uh, recreational marijuana, and it was allowed to go wherever it would naturally otherwise go, onsite consumption still would not be allowed.
Okay. Um, in terms of the transport, um, so if town meeting voted on a ban, that would not include transport. So we would have to have, we wanted to think about that, which I, I don't even know, um, then that would have to be additional regulations?
The, so the transport is interesting, because the transporter as defined currently, and this is one of the questions I flagged in the draft regulations, marijuana transporter is defined as a licensed entity that obtains, possesses the marijuana solely for the purposes of transporting it to marijuana establishments, but not to customers. So you have a retail, you know, retail establishment, but they're buying their product somewhere else, and there's a licensed transporter to bring it from the cultivator, manufacturer, to the retailer. But then there's another term that's used in the discussion that talks about transport, it's a marijuana license, a marijuana transport license, but then, it's not in the definition, so they failed to define it, but they reference it. And that's a retailer, an establishment, then can transport to its customers. Um, and that's, you know, so that, there's, it's kind of two different, it sounds like the same thing, but it's two different concepts, where one is like the trucker, who brings it from, you know, the manufacturer to the Walmart or whatever, your toasters. Um, the other one, but they're not bringing it to your house. The other one is an actual place that can sell to consumers, but instead of you going to the store, they can bring it to you. One of the questions that I think Mary raised it is, you know, is that a, is that a business that is potentially, could potentially be regulated at a local level, like if you drive a taxi, you, and you want to operate in Hingham, you have to have a license to do that? So that is, that's the question. I don't have the answer for you tonight, but I can, I, I don't know that there's a definitive answer. I know other communities have been asking about the tran, the transporter, or the at-home delivery question.
The, the delivery-only retailer, I think, is what it's called. Is that what you're arguing about in the regulations?
Delivery-only.
Twenty-one, page 21 in the regulations.
Page tw, yes, so it's, it's right.
It's just different than the transporters. The only, the only distinction I'm making is that, that's distinct from marijuana transporters.
Right.
This is somebody that, that doesn't have a, a retail store, but can still sell to consumers and deliver.
Right, and I think, Sarah, that's what you were asking for, asking about, right?
Yes.
So that's on page 21. A marijuana retailer that does not provide a retail location, but is authorized to deliver directly from a cultivator to, no, this is, again, they are not delivering to customers. This is only, right? It says right there, "No retail to the public, but is authorized to deliver directly from a cultivator." Well, it doesn't say.
No, no, this is the thing, right? But that's the distinction. I think it does go to the public.
It does.
They don't, they don't have a store.
That does not provide access, but is authorized to deliver directly.
This is, this is the Uber model that Mr. Fage was suggesting.
Yep. Well, like I said, it's, these, the regulations are not crystal clear. Um, the other, but it comes up, and I, in another area where I have it, where I said there's, you know, that, there's, it's, and I, I, sorry, dog-eared.
Twenty-three.
Yeah.
Anyway, just.
Transport is on, right, so there's a, but there's another place where it talks about a delivery license, a marijuana delivery license, which is not a defined term, but is then discussed in one of the sections. Um, so the, so if there were a retailer in Hull and someone lived in Hingham, you know, you know, there's not, there's nothing, if they're not operating, you know, the question is, if they are delivering in Hingham, does that become a retailer in Hingham? I, it all depend, you know, that's the question. Now you don't have, for most of the establishments, they have a location. This is a business with no location. They have wherever they keep their vehicle, or vehicles.
Which, which cannot have any reference on the outside of the vehicle.
Right.
Of what it does and what it's carrying.
Or what it does.
The regulations prohibit that.
But they would go to a cultivator.
Right.
Pick it up, or they would go to a retailer, pick it up, and bring it to your house. Um, and, you know, I, that's one I will tell you tonight, I don't, I don't have the answer to that, as to how or whether, whether or how Hingham could regulate those.
So I'm not, I'm not trying to him, yeah.
Right, or needs to, right.
I'm not trying to hammer it, I just, it, it, it see, it, it strikes me that it underscores the point that the chief was making, which is, there's still, despite the, the legislation from July of 17, and despite the draft regulations, there's still a number of unknowns, and that, you know, there, there is, I don't see the urgency, I certainly don't see the tax revenue urgency, I don't see the urgency that somehow we need to, um, so that's why I think, uh, putting a ban forward for town meeting to consider. If they don't, then we've got the other regulations that we can talk about. Um, but I, I think it's, it's prudent to at least provide the town meeting the, the opportunity to ban for now, while at least the remainder of these questions get figured out. So that's my.
And would you think a ban for a year, a certain period of time, or just a ban?
Well, I don't think we, we necessarily need to tie our hands either way. We can take it up any year we want to, right? So we can amend the, the bylaws, I think, regardless, so we don't, we, we could propose studies, as, as I think Diane suggested, or any number of things, but we don't know, right? And, you know, again, I don't, I don't see the urgency. Um, I see that there is value in taking time to, to, to let some of this stuff shake out. I'm not opposed to a year, but I, um, I'm not sure we need it.
If there's a ban, it could be revisited at any time. I, I don't, I don't see a reason why, so you want to distinguish between a moratorium and a ban. The moratorium is, we need more information, we need to study. The Attorney General is not going to approve a moratorium. However, as a no-community, Hingham can institute a ban, I don't, I think if there was a question, okay, to put a timelint on the ban, I don't, I, you know, it's not typical, once you ban something, you ban, you can come back and unban it.
Next year, right.
But, um, you know, that, you know, that's, that's something the board could consider.
I mean, I sort of hear both sides of this issue. I mean, I, I, I just don't feel terribly strongly. But I think certainly the amount of reasonable regulations that we'd have to put forth between now and town meeting would be challenging, you know, which we might have to be doing on town meeting floor anyway.
Which we still may, we need to be doing, right.
Um, but I, I, I just can see both sides, I really can.
That's fair. Um, yeah, I mean, I think I echo a lot of what you all have said already in terms of, you know, like the chief said, not feeling the need to take the lead on this, particularly when the, the regulations remain unclear. If the timing of our town meeting were October, we would be in a different situation. And we could look at it and feel 100% confident with a time, place, and manner regulation, whereas, you know, when I look at it, I worry that, I mean, we'll still have put forward a time, place, and manner regulation, but I think the ban makes sense for now. I don't necessarily know that it makes sense forever. I think the landscape of this will change, and I think that there will be information that comes forward in the state of Massachusetts and elsewhere, that will inform these decisions in the future. I think the prudent decision for now is to at least put forward the ban at town meeting, and then come up with the best time, place, and manner regulation that we can, knowing what we know now about the draft regulations. Okay.
I certainly, I mean, I feel comfortable with that even, you know, because I don't know. I don't feel strongly, and I don't know. And there seems like there are a lot of unknowns, and, um, I like knowing.
Knowing, we like knowing in Hingham. Um, I think, assuming you all agree, I don't think we would vote on the ban tonight. I mean, Gary's not here for one thing, but additionally, you know, you've already, Susan, identified at least one change you're considering making to the ban. So I think for us to look at this again, and for have you and John Cofflin look at this with fresh eyes, makes sense, and so there's no, there's no rush to push forward the ban tonight, however, it does seem like we have consensus that that, we do want to move forward with a ban. Um, all right, that being said, and it being 8:15, maybe we should, uh, let's move on to another proposed warrant article. Um, I would recommend we move to the, um, the most plain vanilla of them all, the registered marijuana dispensary, um, which is not second on the list, I don't think, but in any case, the Section 5-H Registered Marijuana Dispensary is not in our plan. Mary, if you would be so kind as to walk us through that. I must have it somewhere.
It's in the, it's the last page of the.
Right back.
Eight here. Want to look it up?
No, I know I have it, I just.
Here, here, copies here.
Do, I do, I know, I have one. I wrote it, it's over there on that table.
You have to say one last thing. You have to support the proclamations anyway, because if it fails, the ban fails.
That's what we're doing, yeah, that's what we're doing, yep, thank you.
That's, that's what we're doing next.
Yep, that's our next thing. Okay.
I don't think I, I don't think I, that's right, is there another?
Grab one of the, over there. So it's the last page of the packet that, um... Does anybody else need it, or you all have it? I have it, yep. Okay, thank you. So if I may, um, briefly, Section 5-H Registered Marijuana Dispensaries, the intent of this article is to revise Section 5-H to correct references to legislation that no longer is in effect, and to remove language that will be inconsistent with the regulation of marijuana not medically prescribed. Chapter 55 of the Acts of 2017 is the legislation that is triggering municipalities to evaluate regulations for recreational marijuana, or as it is being called now, adult use of marijuana. Section 47 of Chapter 55 repeals Chapter 369 of the Acts of 2012, which is the act referenced in Section 5.
thousand and twelve, which is the act referenced in section five H of our bylaw. The Department of Public Health will be transferring oversight and regulation of medical marijuana to the Cannabis Control Commission on or before December thirty-first, two thousand and eighteen, after which time the CCC, the Cannabis Control Commission, will promulgate new regulations for medical marijuana. This is certainly another area of uncertainty for the board with regard to the state regulations, and how they might impact our local authority. But we now have enough information in front of us to identify existing language in the bylaw that is no longer accurate. Chapter three fifty-one of the Acts of two thousand and sixteen included an amendment to the Zoning Act, which stated that the growing, cultivation, distribution, or dispensation of marijuana does not qualify for the agricultural exemption under the Zoning Act. So another one of the proposed revisions in this language is to delete that language from section five H. Finally, section five H point three speaks to the exclusion of other marijuana establishments, and this will be regulated by either a ban or time, place, and manner regulation. So this section is also proposed to be deleted. This article does not modify the ability for a registered marijuana dispensary to locate in town. Again, the intent is to really make it more accurate with the status of the legislation that we're aware of today. So it's fairly straightforward, Madam Chair, and turning to the language, do you want me to go through it item by item?
Yeah, let's do that. Please, thank you.
Just flip to the proper page in the bylaw.
Page one oh four in the bylaw, thank you, Susan.
I was all ready for time, place, and manner.
Did I throw your curveball, I'm sorry?
That's okay, we like vanilla. So if I may, this is a fairly brief article, I'll just go through each of the items. Item one, by amending section five H one A, by inserting state law after the word applicable, and deleting the remainder of that sentence. So, and I think this, just to digress, we haven't, you know, perhaps this might be another article that, in order to make it more readable for the layperson, that we end up changing how we say it, you know, we talked with the other articles about, instead of just doing this kind of.
Yep, I think that makes sense. We can reformat that and have it.
We might be able to reformat it, so when you read it, you actually understand it.
Right, but the gist of it is that one A would instead say, "To regulate the sighting, security, and operation of registered marijuana dispensaries, subject to the applicable state law," period. Instead of the long, what's there now?
Thank you. So item two is to amend section five H sub-two by deleting the language, quote, "under one oh five CMR seven-two-five-point-one-zero-zero," and inserting, quote, "subject to applicable state law," end quote, in its place. Item three is to amend section five H five A by deleting the following language, quote, "Provided, however, that an RMD that is solely for the cultivation of marijuana and is protected under chapter forty-eight, section three shall not require a special permit, but shall be subject to section three B nine of the bylaw," end quote. Again, this refers back to the fact that marijuana cultivation no longer qualifies for the agricultural exemption, and so we're taking out that citation. And then item four is to amend section five H to delete the content of five H three, where we talk about exclusion of other marijuana establishments. We are all having this conversation about other marijuana establishments and how they will be regulated. So, the proposal is just delete that language in that section entirely, and just insert, quote, intentionally left blank, end quote. So again, correcting our existing language to cite the appropriate state law and regulations while not taking away any of the rights that we've already granted through our bylaw.
Okay. Do we have any public comment on this proposed warrant article? No. Hearing and seeing none, I would ask my board if they have questions or comments.
It seems to make sense to make the changes as the law and the cultural use of marijuana has evolved, so I haven't seen any problem with it.
Yeah. Sarah, Gordon?
No, I have no problem with it.
Okay.
We'll be doing that a lot of things.
Susan, you, looking back after a little while, and then rereading. In, in item two, right now, the language says, means a not-for-profit entity registered under one oh five CMR, that's being replaced with applicable state law. So I'm wondering, does it make more sense to keep the same kind of wording, so under applicable state law, as opposed to subject to? So you're replacing under one oh five CMR, does it make sense to say under applicable state law?
Kind of makes sense.
Yeah.
Or pursuant to, I don't know if you like one or the other.
I'll keep under.
Yeah, they could do the form.
Yep, under.
The, the other thought, and, and again, this is just coming with kind of having it percolate for a couple of months since we talked about it. Item four, just intend, you know, intentionally deletes all of item three, and item three doesn't work, but does it make sense to leave in exclusion of other marijuana establishments, and just note that, you know, maybe there's a sentence that this governs only marijuana, medically prescribed marijuana, and all other, you know, marijuana establishments are subject to, you know, I mean, kind of reference that they're dealt with otherwise in the bylaw? I don't know if that's necessary or redundant. I just wanted to, you know, as we're sitting here reading it tonight, I had that thought. And I just, you know, said, well, maybe we can, if you're going to hold off on voting and everything till the next meeting, just think about whether it makes sense to.
To reference the use table, like non-medical marijuana.
Or maybe, or maybe since you won't know until town meeting if there's going to be a ban or time, place, and manner, and say, you know, it doesn't make sense to have some language except as expressly permitted, allowed, or permitted elsewhere in this bylaw, then all, any other types are prohibited. And kind of leave it so that, you know, kind of, kind of tie them to each other in some way, because in the time, place, and manner, right, you're saying, and also, if there's, in the ban language, right, it's not prohibiting the medical marijuana, it's kind of like, kind of cross-reference them with each other?
Yep.
That, that, so that was a thought I just had while we were reading through it tonight. And I don't know if you want to at least consider it, and kind of make a decision at your next meeting?
I think we should absolutely revisit it. I think that makes sense to revisit it and, and decide at the next meeting.
Okay.
What are you, you agree?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, I'm good with that.
That's a good idea.
If we know for certain that whatever form, time, place, and manner, or the ban, or the definitions would be under, the definitions wouldn't be under section three A, but the bans on section three A, and then the other stuff's in the use table.
The time, place, and manner isn't going to be though, right?
It'll be in the use table, and then in other sections, subject to other provisions.
Right.
So that'd be more expansive.
Mary and I can bounce some ideas around, and.
That sounds good.
Bring them back to you next time.
Bounce them around, that sounds good. Great.
With the board also, did I hear that you'd like us to look at reformatting, so it's more understandable?
Yeah, replacing the entire sentence.
Yep, thank you, consistent like we did the first five warrant articles. Okay, but otherwise, it sounds like we have consensus on this.
And then the one other thing I'll do is, I think in anticipation of having medical marijuana turned over to the Cannabis Control Commission.
Yep.
The draft regulations do incorporate definitions related to medical marijuana, so I just want to double-check and just see, you know, I mean, make sure there's nothing else in there that you might want to consider tweaking. I don't think so, because I've been through it, I just want to go back and double-check, but I'll just double-check that as well.
Right, yep, that makes sense. Okay, so then, I think we should move on to the, we call it shorthand, the time, place, and manner regulation. It's technically called the Regulation of the Sale and Consumption of Marijuana Not Medically Prescribed. And this is, just to be clear, the warrant article that we would be voting on only if the ban were to fail at town meeting. We would have this after, following it at some point, to capture how, you know, because obviously, if it is going to be sold in the town, we want to make sure we have thought through where, and how, and when. So, Mary, would you be willing to start us off here?
Certainly, just as a little bit of background, this is correct, this is the proposed reasonable regulation draft. If this use were not banned in town, but is determined to be regulated. And before we start going through it section by section, as a way of explanation, really, this proposal touches many different sections of the bylaw, so it may seem complicated, but just the approach to thinking about it was literally going through the bylaw section by section, and trying to determine where we needed to cross-reference, or there may be some kind of connection that needed to be made. And so, the article begins with item one, and that is repealing section five J, which is the moratorium, and replacing it in its entirety with the section titled Regulation of the Sale and Consumption of Marijuana Not Medically Prescribed. This is the portion of the proposed regulation that looks very familiar, somewhat easy to follow, and the board will want to work through it. I think if I may, I'll give an overview of the entire article, and then you can determine how to go through it.
I think that makes sense.
So this section tries to lay out what is the purpose or the intent of this regulation. It provides some definitions and talks about applicability, so it's laying out some guidance. And the, the formatting mirrors other sections within the bylaw. So one is purpose, two, definitions, three, applicability. Section four here talks about special permitting requirements. And so I will, I know we'll circle back to it probably several times, but the proposal is that a marijuana establishment within town would be permitted through a special permit A two, which requires action by the Zoning Board of Appeals, as well as the Planning Board with site plan review, as well as a special permit A three parking determination from the Planning Board. And so that's intentionally a very thorough review of all the potential aspects of such an establishment that might be locating in town. So this section four then talks about the special permit requirements, and goes on and talks about the findings that the boards would have to make in order to issue a special permit for a marijuana establishment, as well as then general requirements and conditions. And under the general requirement and conditions, we look to identify, that's something like the security provisions, we worked closely with the Police Department when the medical marijuana regulations were drafted, and this mirrors to a certain degree that section, and talks about security requirements. And so that's the, if it comes, how do we permit it, we, the board, and what do you think about as far as the physical form, and the site, and potential impacts on the butters? Item two, just to continue on, then speaks to inserting definitions. And these definitions are, were in the slide presentation, and they're also from the statute. And we just took the exact language, so we're proposing to insert the definitions for marijuana or marijuana, marijuana accessories, marijuana cultivator, marijuana establishment. And that definition may need to be changed based on the new regulations, as a caveat, from this draft language. Marijuana product manufacturer, marijuana products, marijuana testing facility, and marijuana retailer. And those, again, were just taken right from the statute. Item three is another modification to a definition, but this is proposing to modify, so again, thought process-wise, as the board approached this draft regulation, was, how do we permit it, and then where do we have to think about adding conditions or exclusions within the bylaw? And Farmer's Market was one of the possible locations, so item three is proposing to amend the definition for Farmer's Market to exclude marijuana, marijuana products, and marijuana accessories from the Farmer's Market. Item four, along a similar vein, proposes to amend the definition of home occupation in section six by inserting, quote, "Marijuana establishments and businesses dealing in marijuana accessories shall not be considered home occupations," end quote. Item five proposes to amend the definition of light industry in section six, to insert the following at the end of the definition, and essentially exclude marijuana establishments or businesses dealing in marijuana accessories. Let me flip to the, so light industry, if I may just elaborate on that to make it clear, the definition is on page one thirteen for light industry. And light industry says, "An activity concerned with the manufacturing, storage, processing, fabrication, packaging, and assembly of products developed from previously refined or similarly processed raw materials. Provided, however, that no activity may be considered light as industry if such activity," colon, and then there's a list, you know, a numbered list, one, two, three, four. So the proposal is to add a five, and, and so that essentially, if an activity involved marijuana establishments or businesses dealing in marijuana accessories, it would not be considered light industry. So that's an exclusion clause. The next change, jumping around a little bit, is looking at section three B. Now we're back to the use table section of the bylaw. We've talked about how to permit it, talked about how to define it, and now we're looking at the use table. And three B is, on page fifteen, special conditions to the schedule of uses. Special conditions apply to the use table, section three A. And if you look at the use table, the board is used to identifying which special conditions apply to which use. And so, the proposal is to add a new special condition to section three B, which would be on page sixteen, number ten, and the special condition would be excluding marijuana establishments and businesses dealing in marijuana accessories. This allows the ability to then modify uses within the use table with that special condition ten, to exclude marijuana establishments and businesses dealing in marijuana accessories. So then, item seven, if we follow along that train of thought, section three A one point eight, talks about. accessory uses in conjunction with single-family dwelling and two-family dwellings. And it says, "Subject to section 3J." And then the proposal is to insert, quote, "And subject to special condition 10 of section 3B," end quote. So there's the application of that special condition that we just talked about. And so the thought process was going through the entire use table and looking at the different uses and thinking about if that special condition should be proposed or considered to be applied.
Do you have the track changes?
I do. Right here. They all have them. Not tonight, but earlier. Yeah, they're all. Susan's asking me if you all have the track changes of the bylaw. I did not hand it to you for tonight, but you all have it. I see Jen's got it. Bill's got it. So I certainly can provide additional copies of it, but it's been distributed.
Okay. It's definitely helpful.
And to Susan's point, it is on the website if anybody would like a copy, and it's easier, you can just ask me for it, and I can provide it for you. It does, you know, as we talk about just putting in, you know, modifiers to sentences, it does help to visualize it. So Madam Chair, item eight is again, and item eight and nine both speak to adding in that modifier of special condition 10, what we just spoke about. Item 10 is adding a new use. Now this is where the board starts thinking about these different classes of uses for marijuana establishments, which again may change based on the regulations. But item 10 proposes to amend section 3A to insert a new use, section 2.4. So 3A, section two is your agricultural section. It currently goes 2.1 to 2.3. The proposal is to add a new use to that agricultural section, 2.4, marijuana cultivator, subject to section 5J. Section 5J again is the special permit criteria portion of the article, to be permitted by a special permit A2 in the Office Park District, Industrial District, Industrial Park District, limited industrial park district, and prohibited in all other zoning districts. So this is the section where you're adding the agricultural use to this table, and then you're going across the columns and determining if it's prohibited, if it's permitted, and what type of permit it would be. Item 11, 12, 13, 14, 15, 16, 17, and 18 all relate to modifying uses within the use table with that subject to special condition 10 of section 3B. Item 19 is back to a more meaty proposal, and that is amending the commercial section of the bylaw, the use table, to add a new use, 4.28, marijuana retailer, subject to section 5J, to be permitted by special permit A2 in Business District A, Business District B, Office Park District, Industrial District, Industrial Park District, and limited industrial park district, and prohibited in all other zoning districts. Following that is another proposed new line in the retail section. It's by amending section 3A to insert new section 4.29, businesses dealing in marijuana accessories, subject to section 5J, to be permitted by special permit A2 in Business District A, Business District B, Office Park District, Industrial District, Industrial Park District, and limited industrial park district, and prohibited in all other zoning districts. Item 21, and we're, there's only a few more. Item 21 and item 22 are again modifying uses within the use table with that, quote, "Subject to special condition 10 of section 3B." So it's excluding, basically what this, the cumulative impact of the last probably 15 items that I've just read to you are that where it's applicable for agricultural or commercial, and we're about to get to industrial, the board is proposing to add new line items within the use table specifically tailored to that pertinent marijuana establishment, whether it's retail or commercial or industrial. And then on all of the other like categories within that retail section or the agricultural section, specifically excluding the marijuana establishment, just to make it very clear of what, you know, a proposed marijuana establishment within each district, how they would be regulated and where it would fall. So it's just trying, it seems repetitive, but it's trying to just look out for loopholes. Okay? So the final item is item 23, by amending section 3A to insert another new line. Now subsection six is the industrial section. It's wholesale and industrial uses. It's on page 23 of the bylaw. And the proposal is to add a new line, use 6.3, marijuana product manufacturing, marijuana testing facility, and wholesale businesses dealing in marijuana accessories, subject to section 5J, which is the special permitting process, to be permitted by special permit A2 in Office Park District, Industrial District, Industrial Park District, and limited industrial park district, and prohibited in all other zoning districts. And that is the text, but again, staff may, it may modify based on this bylaw, the regulation. That's what you submitted to start the conversation.
Yep. Okay. So I think it might make sense to go through the special permit requirements and findings, and then the general requirements and conditions first.
I think at some point, Jen, we should also go through where, you know, where each of these Business District Bs, because right now I'm looking at limited, limited industrial park district, and that's allowing retail right opposite the field. You know, so, you know, the, so we have to sort of look at each one of those and what it means, you know, with each.
I agree. I agree. So how about this? Let's go through the special permit requirements and the general requirements and conditions so that we understand the how. Then we can move to where by looking at each of the new uses that you've identified, Mary, and put in here and compare, and look at on the map, where are those? And then also make sure that we've captured all of the uses to which we should attach the new special condition 10. So sort of three different.
So those three things again, Jen, what you intend to do right now?
So I think we should go through the special permit requirements, including the general requirements and conditions, so that we have an understanding and we all agree on how they will be permitted. Then we should look at, as you suggested, Sarah, where each use is proposed to be allowed, to see if we all agree on that. And then just, you know, Mary went through the entire use table and proposed which ones should have the special condition 10, which is the excluding marijuana provision. And I think we should just make sure we've caught all, that we agree on that list. Does that make sense as a process? So Mary, if we were to walk through the special permit requirements, the how, could you help us, maybe just by walking through it, but then if possible, compare that to our existing special permit process?
So the special permit requirements is, or Madam Chair, should we back up and look at the purpose?
Sure.
That might be the best.
Okay.
To make sure that that's broad enough.
Okay. So why don't I read the purpose? A, to regulate the sighting, security, and operation of marijuana establishments and businesses dealing in marijuana accessories, and the onsite consumption of marijuana and marijuana products, subject to the applicable provisions of Mass. General Law, Chapter 94G, and the regulations promulgated thereunder collectively the Act. And B, to minimize the adverse impacts of marijuana establishments and businesses dealing in marijuana accessories on adjacent properties, residential neighborhoods, schools, and land uses potentially incompatible with marijuana establishments and businesses dealing in marijuana accessories. Susan, do you think it's appropriate to reference onsite consumption there?
Well, I, so I put a note in there. So there's two ways to, to approach it. One might be wait until some point in the future that you know, okay, well, we know at the next town election, there's going to be a ballot question related to this, so revise the zoning at that point to insert it. The other way to approach it is to, you know, in the event, you know, sometimes, especially over passage of time, people lose track. If, you know, there's might be a ballot question and people, it might fall through the cracks, like, oh, wait a minute, we don't regulate this at all. Or what if the state statute got changed because it was so in demand to have onsite consumption that they changed it to say, well, you don't have to have a ballot vote for it anymore, so now it just becomes legal? So one, you know, one thought is potentially to put in a caveat. So where it has onsite consumption of marijuana and marijuana products, to the extent permitted in the town of Hangum. So, but I don't know if that's the best language, so I want to think about it when we come back at the next meeting, but I think you may want to leave it in with a qualifier, right? Because if the law changes where now you don't need a ballot, or there is a ballot question that allows it, well, then it's permitted. But if neither of those things happen, to the extent it's permitted, it's not. So it's not allowed. But, you know, you don't always, like, you don't really do zoning in the what-if in the future, so that's why, you know, I just, I flagged it as well when you just read it. So I think it should be flagged, and I, and I want to kind of revisit it for the next meeting.
All right. That's fair.
That's fine.
Yeah. Does anyone else have any comments on the purpose or thoughts on its scope, its appropriateness?
One, one other note, sorry, it's just processing as we're going. And we'll get to this, I think, more when you start talking about definitions and uses and where things are allowed. And onsite, onsite consumption is something that's going to need to be licensed. So it falls under, I believe it's going to fall under the marijuana establishment umbrella definition. So you may not need it at all. There's a lot of, so a lot of things around the onsite consumption. So for example, onsite consumption, depending on how they're serving, what they're serving, is that going to fall under one of the restaurant categories? You know, fast food restaurant, you know, whatever, all the different kinds of food service definitions? But the regulations consider it a retailer. And so depending on what it turns into, say it's like the example of, I don't know, I'm not, I'm just giving examples that pop into my head. You know, Be Good is a little hamburger joint with some seating, whatever it gets, but it has to deal, it has to do restaurant-type permitting. You know, they're small, they're not full-blown restaurants, but they require, they have different parking requirements, et cetera. So it may almost be, do you just deal with, treat them like any other retailer? Or does the definition of retailer in Hangum exclude, you know, the social, what is, I can't even, I can't even keep remembering, the marijuana social consumption, whatever they're calling it.
Consumption retailer.
And then that gets put in the kind of restaurant category. So, I mean, you can really start kind of getting down into the nitty-gritty on all of them. So, you know, whether you need it at all, because it's a marijuana establishment, is a question. Should it be called out if, you know, at all, since it's right now not permitted in Hangum regardless of what town meeting does this year? Or should it be kept in with a caveat? So I feel like there's three different kind of questions around it that I'll report back if I get some.
Well, right.
Helpful input. No, and I mean, this kind of thing, I'd bounce around with John, think about the pros and cons and, okay.
Well, no, in the draft regs, the whole business about a mixed-use marijuana social consumption business, which is, then it's a secondary thing, and it's less than 51%. Maybe it's a restaurant, maybe it's a, I don't know what it could be.
A studio with lotions, a spa with lotions.
Sure, exactly, a spa, exactly. So, no, there's all kinds of options in there.
Right. So for example, you have bakeries in town, they're not really cafes, but they have two little tables where if you want to kind of sit down and eat your slice of cake, you had, you have a cup of coffee, you can do that there, but it's not really a restaurant or a food service business. So, you know, it's, you know, it kind of just goes to the trying to figure out the best categories to put, put them in.
Okay.
I think one of the tricky things that I'm still sorting out, so I just will throw it out there, is this less than 51%. So do we need to add a different accessory use? Like, I'm not even really sure what my thought is on that.
What do you mean by less than 51%?
If the marijuana use is less than 51% of the principal use.
Onsite consumption.
You know, is that an accessory use? Because that, we're saying consumption, and we're all thinking about food.
Right.
But it could be a spa with special treatments.
You get a facial that has a lotion.
You know, or.
It could be a coffee shop. I mean, I don't know if it could.
You know, I don't, I'm not even sure that I know everything it could be, to be honest with you. So it's an evolving thing. So, sorry, I just, that whole, that falls in the category for me of, are we being thorough enough to do what you wish to do?
Right. That's the flag without an issue that we're going to run into over and over here.
Right.
Okay. Any other big picture or small picture comments on one A and B, purpose? So then the definitions is section two. The applicability, this says, "The provisions in this section apply to any one or combination of the uses which may constitute a marijuana establishment and business dealing in marijuana accessories excluding any one or combination of the uses which may constitute a registered marijuana dispensary." So that's where we exclude the medicinal. And then we have the special permit requirements.
So to that end, your first question was just to broadly compare these special permit requirements with our typical special permit requirements. Our typical special permit requirements are on page six of the bylaw. I will tell you that there's, under the approval criteria, there's A through G for a special permit, A1 and A2. And then your special permit A3 approval criteria are in section 5A6 of the bylaw. The special permit requirements proposed in this Regulation of the Sale and Consumption of Marijuana Not Medically Prescribed are, for obvious reasons, more specific and tailored to the proposed use. And really, I looked to the medical marijuana permitting requirements for, especially for guidance about some of the application materials to be provided and the security provisions. A lot of that is fairly standard. And so just reading through it line by line, and we still have the chief here, so that's good. Again, a special permit A2 is required for any marijuana establishment or business dealing in marijuana accessories. A special permit A3 parking determination is required in accordance with section 5A2 of the bylaw. So a special permit A2 is acted on by the zoning board in conjunction with the planning board. You do site plan review. And then the special permit A3 is the planning board. Special permits are discretion- Special permits are discretionary, they're not permitted by right. A special permit says this use may be appropriate in this location or in this zone, but not at every location within this zone, as opposed to site plan review, which you either approve or approve with conditions. And so, there's a sort, a higher burden of proof, per se, for a special permit. That's why we call them somewhat discretionary. So, A tells you what permits you need, and B, we say, in addition to the application requirements set forth in Section 5J, a special permit application for a marijuana establishment or business dealing in marijuana accessories shall also include the following. One, the name and address of each owner of the marijuana establishment or business dealing in marijuana accessories. Two, copies of all required licenses and permits issued to the applicant by the Commonwealth of Massachusetts and any of its agencies or commissions for the marijuana establishment or business dealing in marijuana accessories. Three, trade name, logo, and building signage which complies with applicable provisions of this bylaw and applicable law. Four, evidence of the applicant's site control of the site of the marijuana establishment or business dealing in marijuana accessories for the marijuana establishment or business dealing in marijuana accessories, such as a deed or lease. That sounds awkward. Evidence of the applicant's site control of the site, should it be site control of the location?
I think it's just...
Or is that just, it just sounds weird?
And I just think it's repetitive, I don't think you need...
The applicant's control of the site, you can get rid of the first site.
Yeah.
The applicant's control of the site.
And then I don't think you need to say marijuana establishment or business twice, right? Evidence of the applicant's control of the site for the establishment or business, such as a deed or lease. Like, why?
Right. It's a, it's a double.
Yeah, it's kind of repetitious.
So, control of the site of the marias, yeah. So, I'm taking out four, the marijuana establishment or businesses dealing in marijuana accessories, the second time it's in there. Five, if the applicant is a business organization, a statement under oath disclosing all of its owners, shareholders, partners, members, managers, directors, officers, or other similarly situated individuals and entities and their addresses. If any of the above are entities rather than persons, the applicant must disclose the identity of the owners of such entities until the disclosure contains the name of individuals. Proposed security measures for the marijuana establishment or business dealing in marijuana accessories, including lighting, fencing, gates, and alarms, et cetera, to ensure the safety of persons and to protect the premises from theft. Seven, a list of any vehicles associated with the business and anticipated to be stored on the premises. And eight, proposed hours of operation. So, the goal is to really get a thorough understanding of the proposed business entity as well as the site design. C, mandatory findings. The Board of Appeals shall not issue a special permit for the marijuana establishment or business dealing in marijuana accessories until it finds that. One, the applicant has satisfied all of the conditions and requirements of the Section 5J and any other applicable provisions of the zoning bylaw. And two, the marijuana establishment or business dealing in marijuana accessories demonstrates it will meet the permitting requirements of all other applicable state and local authorities related to the use and operation of a marijuana establishment or business dealing in marijuana accessories. And three, the marijuana establishment or business dealing in marijuana accessories is designed to minimize any adverse visual, odor, audible, vehicular, or economic impacts on a butters or the surrounding neighborhood. So, those are the findings.
Okay. Does anyone have any comments on the special permit requirements or the findings so far we should discuss? No questions? Susan does?
Yeah.
I have just a question. Vehicles stored on the premises, this is seven above mandatory findings. I mean, do we normally allow people to store vehicles on premises? I'm just, do we want to even mention storing on premises? Why are they storing vehicles on the premises? I don't know.
So, let's think about a dry cleaner with a delivery service. They could have a van or two, like dependable cleaners. If they came before you for site plan review, the board would, would want to know, you know, do you have a fleet that's going to be parked there when your business is closed? That was the, now, that doesn't answer your questions, but that speaks, you know, just, that's where that comes from.
So, maybe it's not so much as stored or being parked overnight, or being parked on the premises because they're taking parking spaces up, or you just mean the ones that are going to be parked there and used with the business?
The ones that are, you know, support the business operation, right? So, during the hours of operation, maybe they're out doing the delivery, but when that store is closed, would those cars then go home to whoever was the delivery driver? Or could they possibly be stored on-site? And is that something we would want to look at, whether they'd be within a fenced-in, you know, yard area?
We addressed garaging in the use table. Do you think it should, in 1.8.1 and 1.8.2 and 3?
Isn't that residential, though?
Those are accessory uses to residential.
Okay, so do we have anything? Or anything else?
Or do we want to change that language to talk about enumerating vehicles that support the proposed marijuana establishment or business?
I think it just needs to be reworded to be more clear.
Would you like us to work on rewording that one?
Yeah, sure.
That makes sense. Susan, you had some, a couple of things.
Yeah. I guess in B, 4B, it says, in addition to the applications requirements said fourth in 5J, but isn't this the application requirements of 5J? Or, so, should this be referring to the application requirements, like site plan review? I guess, I'm confused by why, because these are the submittal requirements of 5J. So, I was just confused by that.
Let's see. It says, in addition, so it should say, shall, so in addition to these, actually, we don't list, we don't call it application requirements.
So, I don't know if it's just in addition to the requirements in one, in, you know, the site plan review, submittal requirements, or other, you know, but we can, I mean, it's just, I'm just flagging it, and we can kind of go back and revisit it.
Well, and I was thinking with the special permit, A3, so, all right.
But the A3 would be the parking.
Which would go along, would be the parking table.
Would be on the site plan. Right. So, that would, but that would be separate than 5J.
Yeah.
Okay, so that's another one that you want to add together.
Does 5J layout criteria?
No, well, this is 5J.
Yeah.
So, that's why, that was my confusion, like, this is the submittal requirements of 5J. So, I think, I've read it to mean the other requirements, submittal requirements of the bylaw, of the zoning bylaw outside of 5J, and 5J is requiring, but I don't know if that was intended, but that's kind of how I interpreted it.
Almost like I got interrupted and then didn't put in another section of application stuff.
Then, so, 4B, little Roman 2, copies of all licenses and permit. And this is where I've run into the biggest conflict between the draft regulations and kind of how the zoning's worded. And the zoning is, and it's worded, I think, believe we have it worded this way for medical marijuana as well. If you want to come in and open a registered marijuana dispensary, show that you have a license from the state.
Right.
So, in the, and I don't know if you all have the application, but not only is there potential conflict with the licensing process in the draft regulations, but I believe the draft regulations may even be internally inconsistent. So, in the application requirements of the regulation, Section 500.101, they, there's a three, three-part application. There is an application of intent packet, a background check packet, and a management and operations profile packet. And the application to the state is not deemed complete until all of these packets have been delivered. Under the application of intent, there's a number A through L of submittals that have to go in that packet. And there is four items that deal with, affect the municipality. And I don't know if you have the regulations, it's on page, starts on page 24.
I have an extra copy here if anyone needs one.
So, it starts on page 24, application of intent, and if you go over to page 25 with F, the first thing they, they have to, so they have to negotiate a host community agreement with the town before they ever apply to the state. That's the first thing.
Right.
In G, they have to conduct a community outreach hearing. So, this is, they kind of work with the town to set up their own public outreach, where they have to notify, they have to put it in the newspaper, and they have to file with the town clerk, the planning board, the contracting authority, which I believe is a selectmen, local licensing authority for adult use of marijuana, so that would be the zoning board of appeals, and the planning board. And then, you know, they have to attest that they held this, and they have to notify butters. So, in effect, there, it's not a permitting hearing, but they have to do kind of a public outreach. And then they have to say all the information that they have to give the public. All right, so that's the second thing they have to do.
But to do that, do they need to get, they get the license to do that? They have to do that to get the license from the state.
Yes, okay.
So, but your language would cover that.
Now, we get to number three. Documentation that the marijuana establishment is in compliance with local zoning ordinances or bylaws.
Which they couldn't get unless they already had their thing.
No, in order to be in compliance, you, if, if we were, if the town of Hangum requires a special permit, they have to have their special permit. So, but the wording of our draft bylaw is they have to have the license before they can get the special permit. This is saying they have to be in compliance.
Circular.
Right? So, but what's, and then you'll see under H, little 1, the commission is part of its review of the application. So, this is where now, it's, it's, within the regulations, it's not consistent, because their application is incomplete, therefore, the commission's not reviewing it until they've provided these things. But then, the documentation that they have to prove their compliance is, the commission, while it's reviewing the application, will ask the municipality to confirm that it's, right? That they have, the town, the community, have the municipality 60 days to respond and say whether or not it complies with the local bylaws or ordinance. And then it gets even more complicated, because if you go to page 32, no, that's the wrong, 37, I'm sorry, page 37. Now, this is the commission acting on the packet in number four, right? So, on page 26, in order for your, your application to be complete, you need to have this documentation that you're in compliance. On page 37, upon determination that the application is complete, then the application is forwarded to the community, and the community has 60 days to say whether, right? So, internally, right? So, their own process is internally inconsistent, but now it creates this issue for the board saying, well, what are we recommending? Are we recommending that they have to have their license before they come to us?
Yes.
Or are you going to?
Yes.
Right.
Then that's what we're going to do.
Right. The alternative is you make it a, like, it's a, it's a required condition of the permit that they can't...
Prior to the issue of the special permit, how we need in there, right?
Yeah, you could condition it.
I mean, because you have to do it that way, because you can't, you can't, you can't have the special permit hearing and approve the site plan review in the A3, and it's like, now go out and get your license from the state.
Well, you could make it a condition that the, that they cannot commence operations or take any actions under the permit. Permit's not in effect until they have the license. But I'm saying, it's just...
Spending a lot of time at that point on a, an applicant that hasn't been approved by the state.
Right, right. So, you know, this is, this is...
I mean, there's, but there's so, there's so much state regulation, that it'd be better, I think, for the board to have to comply with the state regulation first.
Right, because in a lot of ways, if you, right, in a lot of ways, if you know that they've passed muster on all the items, including the security, which is really extensive, and if you don't mind, if I could just kind of speak to the chief for a second.
Me too.
I don't, no, I'm talking about the security, but I don't know if the depart, your department or any police organizations that your department are, have analyzed these yet, but there's a whole bunch of sections where it talks about local law enforcement. You have to provide this to local law enforcement, and local law enforcement has access, all the security required, and to a certain degree, and this is where it gets complicated for the board, they're allowed to keep their security secret with only disclosing it to the commission and local law enforcement, because they don't want everybody to know what their security is, right? Because then people can find ways around it. So, you know, there's a little bit, but what I can do is...
It's great, more paperwork for us to track all this stuff and more...
Right, right. So, what I'll do is, and I'll talk to John Cofflin, is we could probably get you, like, an annotated version of the regulations that show you all the places where law enforcement's referenced, but I don't know whether or not you, like I said, whether there's any umbrella organizations for the police departments that are doing advisories for you or anything like that, so...
I can look into it, but I think the police departments haven't been adequately informed of any of this stuff, because we're all facing the same stuff, and no one really knows what the law's going to end up being.
Right. And I apologize for tying these to...
Police departments aren't helping on this yet because they don't know.
Right. And I apologize for tying, but I think they're tied together because...
We would need to know that the security was all set before we approved the special permit.
Right, because to the extent that you're requiring them to submit...
Practically speaking, we would handle that kind of similar way we do now, where the chief, chief of police would fire, and their comment letter says, I, I make an adequate finding, the security has the standards set by the regulations.
But maybe we need to take some of the granular detail about the submittal of the security information.
Security, that's why, that's how I'm tying it up.
Out of this requirements thing and just say, subject to review and acceptance by the local law, like, maybe something in here.
Right. You might want to tie kind of the, security has to be submitted.
Right.
And again, so this is where there's a little, again, chicken and egg situation.
Again, where, not to confuse it even further, where does the host community agreement fit in this?
All right, so I'm sorry, so that's in on page 25.
Because the security requirements and all that will be in, I would imagine, in any negotiated host community agreement, you would want to spell that sort of thing out as well.
Right. And interestingly, other than mentioning on page 25 that they have to submit the host community agreement as part of their application for the license, there is no discussion in the regulations as to what should or could be included, what may or may not be included in a host community agreement. I mean, that presumably would be, because they say the contracting authority for the municipality, that's the Board of Selectmen in Hangum.
Yep.
So, you know, again, I, I think that it, the, the special permit requirements are a good starting place, but now that we have draft regulations, we're going to need to... a good starting place, but now that we have draft regulations, we're gonna need to fine-tune them and try to line them up. And I, I don't know, I mean, I was looking at when the public hearings on the regulations were taking place to see if I could go, listen, but the first, the first one that's in Boston or in our geographic location is not until mid-February. So, like, they're starting out in the western part of the state, they're going to the Cape, then they're going to Boston, they're gonna have one in Roxbury, but then they're up in Danvers, they're out, you know what I mean? So, it's not, they don't really have a good south shore one. And even the Boston ones are not until, I think, after you were talking about trying to vote on this.
I mean, the reality is, like, if we, if we get to time, place, matter, town meeting, we're gonna be back the next year amending it, learning from what works, what doesn't work.
That's right.
What other communities are doing, what they aren't doing. And kind of like what the chief said, you get it, over time, we're gonna, we're figuring out how to do it right. You know, because right now, we're not the only community doing this. So.
Yep, right.
I think we have a good start.
Right.
I think our A2, A3 criteria in our bylaw is pretty comprehensive, is good, making some additions to it to cover unforeseen consequences. I think we have to kind of go with that.
So, if you make the requirement that they have to have the license before they can get the special permit, then I think, and I'm just thinking this out, through out loud with you while we're doing this, all figuring it out together, is I think that the process would have to be, they submit, you know, they come to the community for certification that they're in compliance with local bylaws. And I think the certification would have to be their type of marijuana establishment is permitted in that location with a special permit. So, yes, it would be allowed, subject to them having to return to us with the license to get the special permit. But you wouldn't be able to say, yes, they're in compliance, because to be in fully compliance, they'd have to have the special permit in hand. So, right, so that's your.
It's a little like.
Let's, let's think of it this way, how would we regulate an alcohol establishment? Somebody wants to come in and they want to sell alcohol. Wouldn't they have to show that they're in compliance with the alcohol beverage commission first before they come in?
Well, but I don't think that's part for, so that's the difference between.
The sharing ways till we get our, so she typically has us, depending on what it is.
It's usually zoning. It's usually zoning, so we, this board doesn't really handle that.
Right, but, but the thing is, and, but a liquor store is in its own distinct use under the zoning bylaw. You just get, and if it's retail, a lot of the re.
But I'm talking about the state, the state requirements.
Right.
In conjunction with the local requirements.
Right, but I will tell, so let's give you a different example, a restaurant, because that's something that does require a special permit, as opposed to a lot of retail is just as a right. I believe that a lot of people come in, get their special permit for their restaurant, and then apply for their Victrols license and their, and their, you know, because that's a whole process with fees and everything else, and, and they, you know, to go through, I think they want to make sure they can open their restaurant before they go and get the licenses for their restaurant. So, I do think that there's those types of.
So, the restaurant example, the restaurant, the restaurant owner would need to get a state license and a local license.
Right, but they typically get the local license first.
And be approved, and then they would come to the board.
So, like Carmella's.
Good, good example.
Right, so they came in for the restaurant.
Now we want to do other stuff, right?
So, they got their special permits from the boards, and then they had some renovations to do. While they were doing their renovations, they then applied to the selectmen's office for their liquor licenses, because they need to know how many seats we're gonna have, you know, what the size of the facility is. They have to have the details that they don't have till you do your process.
So, yeah, so again, it's.
Yeah, it costs money.
Isn't it a little like back at the start of the medical marijuana, where, where a municipality would issue a letter of non-opposition or whatever it was? I mean, aren't you talking about the same thing, which is a letter that says where they want to go complies with our?
Right, right, but they would still have to come back and get the permit.
Yeah, so, so then you can go through the state, you get the state license, and then you come back. All we're saying is if they had a license, we would, we would entertain an application.
Yeah, I, I think we can work, I think we can work through it and, and figure it out. I just, I just wanted to point out that it's not.
It just says documentation.
It's, right. I, I mean, right now, it's not black and white, which one should come first or has to come first.
We always, we also commonly do, do it where we go through our approval process, and we condition our approval process on something.
Right, right, so that's the other.
Lincoln Building, sort of, with the tunnel cap issue, but does part and parcel of what we were doing, we said, okay, we're done, we're giving you what we can, now, but you've still got to deal with the state on the tunnel cap issue, it's a similar process. Where, where we could say, before the issue of, but that's your permit, you have to do X, Y, and Z.
Okay, alright. So, I just want to see if Susan has more on this, Tom, and then I'll get to you.
Oh, sorry, let me. Let's see.
Good discussion.
I, I think that, I think that, that overall conversation kind of touched on a few different aspects of this.
I think that's right.
So, again, I think it's another one, if, you know, I can, if I can work with Mary, and we can kind of do a deeper dive into the draft regs and come back with some suggestions. But I don't have any specific drafting, like, change a sentence, kind of.
Yeah, okay.
Chat a comma here.
That's, okay, that's helpful. Mr. Fatch, if you have a question, you need to come to the microphone, please, thank you, because we're being televised.
Patship Street, I just, just thinking, you know, out of the box, where we have multiple special permits, you know, potentially, the way you could address it is have a special permit to address that, essentially, that preliminary stage. And then you have a second special permit where they have to come back. You know, so basically, they get the special permit that allows them to move forward with the state level, but then they're gonna have to come back and ultimately get the second special permit once they've satisfied whatever that is they have to get at the state level. So, just, you know, procedurally, that's just a thought.
Okay, thanks. Okay, so the next would be number five then, right? General requirements and conditions?
Yes.
Want to walk us through the, the intent and thinking here, Mary? Sure. So, again, this closely mirrors the marijuana establishment, general requirements and conditions. A, use variances shall strictly be prohibited. B, the hours of operation shall be set by the Board of Appeals. C, special permits shall remain exclusively with the original applicant to whom it is issued, who shall be the owner or lessee of the land and/or building described in the application. The special permit shall automatically terminate on the date of the, the date the applicant transfers or conveys. Other than the granting of a mortgage to an institutional lender, its title or leasehold interest, as applicable, in the land or building where the marijuana establishment or building dealing, business dealing in marijuana accessories is located. The intent of that was to say it's not transferable. If a lot of the information that you told us when we granted you this approval changes, they have to come back and get it reauthorized. A special permit may be transferred only with the approval of the Board of Appeals by major modification to the special permit, with all the information required in this section 5J. And maybe we want to modify that 5J to be 5J4. D, all sales or other distribution of marijuana or marijuana products or marijuana accessories shall occur indoors. No smoking, burning, or consumption of marijuana or marijuana products shall be permitted on the premises of a marijuana establishment or business dealing in marijuana accessories. But that maybe needs to be modified now. Or say, except as expressly allowed, I don't know, based on our previous conversation about the consumption. The intent of this was, you know, this was focused more, that one sentence at the time, thinking about the strict retail provision, not like a onsite consumption. So, I think that needs to be looked at. E, the marijuana establishment or business dealing in marijuana accessories shall provide the Hingham police and fire departments, building commissioner, and the Board of Appeals with the names, phone numbers, and email addresses of all management staff and key holders to whom one can provide notice if there are operating problems associated with the establishment or business dealing in marijuana accessories. F, as a condition of its special permit, the handouts are on the table. As a condition of its special permit, the holder shall, I, and prior to the issuance of a certificate of occupancy, provide to the Board of Appeals a copy of all local permits required for operation of the marijuana establishment or business dealing in marijuana accessories. And two, file an annual report to the Board of Appeals, no later than January 31st, providing a copy of all current applicable local permits and state licenses for the marijuana establishment or business dealing in marijuana accessories and its owners demonstrating continued compliance with the conditions of the special permit. G, any special permit issued under this section 5J shall lapse, if not exercised, within one year of issuance. H, immediately upon the earlier of the expiration, surrender, or revocation of any state-issued license or registration, or the ceasing of operations at the marijuana establishment or business dealing in marijuana accessories, all marijuana, including plants, marijuana products, and marijuana accessories of any kind shall be destroyed, excuse me, or removed from the property. That's the end of item 1.
Of the.
Well, item 1 of the warrant article.
Oh, right. So, I just want to note a couple of things. The first, in F, I, F, um, the filing of the annual report, no later than January 31st. The board may want to consider filing, having the annual report tied to the anniversary of the issuance of their license, because under the state regulations at page 40, the license expires one year af, so the way it works is they get a provisional license, then if they're missing anything, like, you know, here's a provisional license, you have to get us all this additional information. Once they satisfy all those conditions, then they get a, a final license. But the license, the state license expires one year from the date of issuance of the provisional license, and annually thereafter, and they have to renew it annually. So, for example, if they get their license in February, right? Their provisional, their state license in February, they could tell you on January 31st they're in compliance, but their license is about to expire. So, it may make more sense to tie it, like, annually upon the anniversary of their license they have to, because they have to apply for renewal 60 days prior to the expiration of their license, and then they get issued a renewal license within 30 days, so that by the time it would have expired, the renewals come to them. So, I think it might make sense to tie it.
Yeah, I think that makes sense.
The second item is, any special permit shall lapse, if not exercised, with one year. I mean, that might be fine, and just keep it that way. There's, I'm gonna go back and double-check, just because there's provisions in the regulations about having to exercise their license, like, get up and operating within a certain period of time. And I just want to make sure that they don't conflict with each other anyway, they probably line up. But I just haven't double-checked.
Makes sense.
What their timeframe for exercising may be. And if it's, the towns may be shorter, that may be okay, but the thing we always have to think about is the attorney general's gonna have to review all these, and that, that office, the municipal law unit office is gonna have a bear of a year reviewing these, because they have to make a determination, and every town's gonna have whatever slightly different spin on their time, place, and matter bylaw. Okay, is what the town's asking them to do in conflict with the state regulations, and is it superseded by the state regulations so that the town can't require it or can't alter? So, that's the way I'm, like, I can't play Margaret Hurley, who's in charge of the municipal law unit, but I'm trying to kind of channel that if I was her and I was looking at this, and, and I'm just trying to do that exercise for the purposes of trying to advise you the best I can, knowing that we don't know.
Okay.
We don't know. I'm hoping that, you know, the issue is cities, when they adopt zoning amendments or zoning bylaws, they don't get them reviewed by the AG. So, we only get the benefit, so they could be doing all sorts of illegal things, and nobody knows until they sue the city over it. But all towns have to get reviewed by the AG. So, I'm kind of hoping that some towns that are ahead of us with time, place, and manner will, will, will start getting reviews, like, the letter, review letters from the AG, and start getting a sense of what they're okay with, what they're not okay with, because.
I didn't think the AG's office reviewed them till the spring or summer.
No, well, so what happens is, once you have your town meeting, they have a certain number of time. So, if someone had a town meeting in December and adopted a time, place, and manner, we may know in the next, you know, month or so, but we may not know for a town meeting. So, I, I mean, like I said, we're, we're just trying to, we're all trying to figure it out as we go. I'm trying to draw from whatever information might be available from other communities as we go.
Yep.
Okay, okay.
That's helpful.
Alright, so those are, so those are my thoughts on kind of FG and H, is I'm just gonna double-check the regs and maybe suggest language that ties them together, so that they'll make sense.
The only other comment I have on this section, on the general requirements, is that, Mary, I noticed that on page 106 of our bylaw, related to registered marijuana dispensaries, you did not, and I, at the risk of getting into the where conversation, which I don't want to get into the where conversation now, I'm just gonna point out that I noticed that you did not include the dimensional requirements that are set forth there. So, I just want to sort of put a placeholder there to think about if it.
What page?
Page 106 of our zoning bylaw, at the very top.
Oh, okay. Oh, the, the, um.
You know, the 500 feet from a school, outdoor playground, athletic fields, unless. So, I, I know that was specific to the.
Right.
South Hingham Development Overlay District, because that's where the RMDs are. I'm just sort of putting a pin in this to say, let's keep thinking about this when we talk about where.
Alright, so page 70 of the state regulations.
Okay.
There's a buffer zone provision. Marijuana establishments shall comply with all local requirements regarding citing, that's what you're working on now, provided, however, that if no local requirements exist, they shall not be cited within a radius of 500 feet of a public or private school, daycare center, or any facility in which children commonly congregate, measured in a straight line from the establishment, so, of the facility. So, it's like building, it's like building to building kind of thing, as opposed to property line.
Yep.
So, if you're silent on it, it's going to be 500 feet.
Right. It's interesting, a place where children commonly congregate, a facility in which children commonly congregate.
Five, so the medical, the town currently has 500 feet of the boundary.
Right.
Which is further, but, um, of a residential zoning district, school, playground, athletic fields.
Subject to a lot of interpretation.
Yes.
Day, home daycares.
Right, right.
Is it at McDonald's?
What is children commonly?
At McDonald's, they go to My Gym.
My Gym.
I mean, they go to a lot of places. That's broad language.
Dairy Street Shops? I, right, so, I mean, that language, I don't know, it's not, I mean, I think they were trying to speak to concerns that people have.
Right.
About the impact on children, but I, I'm not a big fan of such lack of clarity, but.
Well, I guess another. Well, I guess another wrinkle or something to consider about the buffer zones is, do you place just a blanket one like this? But as we talked about on the use table, some is in a retail zone, some is in an industrial zone, some is agricultural. Are there, does your buffer zone desire change depending on what use category you're in? I know that's a complicated question for this time of night, but...
No, it's true.
I mean, so that's, there's two different, you know, two different ways to go. Maybe you have, you know, less of a concern in the industrial zone as long as you hit your 500 feet.
So let me ask you, is St. Paul's, is that in the residential district or is that in the business district?
Business.
So most of the elementary schools and most of the Hingham Public Schools and even the private schools are in residential districts, but South Shore Collaborative is in the industrial district. I'm trying to think, what is the Montessori, and is that in residential?
We just permitted a daycare on Abington Street, too.
Right.
Suascola is in the...
Right, Suascola, right.
Business district. Or industrial, that's what the...
Bright Horizons and Shipyard.
Yep, Bright Horizons, too.
So, you know, a five, I mean, a five, so if you say Bright Horizons and you go 500 feet, I'm not sure how far that is, but I mean, that could probably wipe out portions of the shipyard right there. With St. Paul's where it is, that could wipe out a big part of the downtown. So, so the thing is, even, okay, so going to the, even if the town didn't, even if, right, the community center might, is a place children congregate. So even if there was no regulation in town, right, even if there was no regulation, no ban, if you start putting a radius around these schools, you're gonna...
It's like, it's like the criminal law in Massachusetts for a school zone, distribution of narcotics. Is it 200 or 250? I think it's 200 feet, but it's a mandatory minimum, and a lot of communities have schools everywhere.
Yeah.
And individuals who, you know, they get caught up in it because they're possessing, and this is longer, it's 500 feet, but I think the criminal statute is 200 or 250.
And we had to be careful with the medical marijuana to not zone it out of town.
Right.
Is it different with this?
That's right.
Right. And so, you know, I guess it becomes a question, and, you know, we could probably do a little exercise and I'm gonna, I'm gonna bother my GIS buddy, Lottie, and see if she can do, you know, maybe plop some radiuses on us on kind of some of these places.
Where it's already...
And say, what's left, once you do this.
There's going to be a lot of places where we don't even think about commonly congregating.
Well, until you get an application in and everybody comes out to oppose it, and then they'll identify things.
I mean, you know, so potentially, well, with the exception of Montessori, with the exception of the Montessori school, probably lots of that business B going down 353 might not be in the radius.
How far, how far is the collaborative away from the RMD, oh, we don't have an RMD, but...
Well, it's 500, so they, they're required 500 feet from the property line, so...
The collaborative didn't interact with it, but now we just approved a daycare at 73 Abington, which may, you know, things that have been approved since we adopted the RMD thing may now further complicate that.
When we did the RMD, we talked about the collaborative, that was one of our...
Challenge...
No, and I think you drew, I think you drew the radiuses, the radii around it, and so it might be worth it, and, you know, Lottie's just so good at doing this stuff.
I think that would be helpful to see.
That'd be, that would be interesting.
The zones where it's automatically, and what's left, because we, we have to make sure we're not...
Maybe you won't care anymore, once you see the circles.
Well, a business is, St. Paul's may not go anywhere, but other businesses could come and go, so it's not...
The school.
I mean, it's a good exercise. The school will probably stay there, but some of the other things could, you know...
Yep. Yep. Okay. We could also, just while we're on this topic, I mean, I understand this is the buffer zone and it's building to building, as you pointed out, Susan, but we have the right to make that more strict, right? If we wanted to do property line to property line like we did with the RMDs, we could, right?
Yeah, I mean, it says that they shall comply with local requirements regarding sighting, and this is like the minimum, this is the fallback if there's nothing.
Right.
I would say, and this goes, and addresses with the medical, and I actually work with Hingham on it, but I also dealt with it in another town, where the issue became, do you make those circles so big that you're in effect zoning it out of the town?
And that's why I'm asking, is if we, when we do this exercise, I think it will become clear if we, if we want or should tweak that.
It'd be tough to make it less than 500 based on our community because if I'm an applicant, I'm going to argue it's unduly burdensome and that there's no place for me to go.
Well, if we can prove, that's why I think we should do it.
Well, I think if we start with plopping circles on the zoning map, or on the GIS map, using the minimum, you know, restriction.
Right.
And then you see, okay, well, how much of the town is left?
Right.
You might say, look, there's, you know, it really should be more restrictive, or it should be more restrictive in a residential district, or it should be...
There may be certain ways we want to...
I think starting with plopping a dot down in the middle of a school and going out 500 feet, I mean, and technically you're going from the edge of the facility, but if you start, you're being conservative if you plop it down in the middle of the building, do the 500 around it and see what's left.
Yep. Okay.
And the board has buffer zones to restrict or regulate, but also as you go through each of these districts, like agricultural, you may choose, you may look at your list of zoning districts that that use is allowed in and say, it's not appropriate at all in a business A zone, or...
Right.
So that's another way that the board could guide where potential locations will be.
Right. Okay.
We identified the broadest.
Right.
So that the board could then exercise discretion.
Right. Okay, that makes sense.
I mean, on definitions, I believe, just came right out of the statute. I think the question is, given that they've gotten even more expansive with their definitions, so, you know, does it, is it going to make sense to add more? Is it going to make more sense to incorporate them by reference? I think, yeah, so, I mean, the language of the definitions is the language from the statute, so there's not a lot of parsing of words to do with that in here for the...
There's, well, there's the three edits to our existing home occupation, farmer's market...
No, I mean, in the ones where all the marijuana establishment, marijuana products...
Where would we state them all?
I'm saying the ones that are in item two are just taken directly from the statute.
There.
So the best way to incorporate those, I think, is just to, you know, what's the best way to incorporate, is the question, the open question for that. And then I think the rest of them is literally just, as you said, Jen, walking through the table, right? Because that's the rest of them, Mary, is all the table.
And the, and those three definitions. I think the theory behind putting the marijuana definitions in, because I remember Susan and I had the conversation about, do we reference them? Or do we put them in? And at the time, and the opinions may have changed, but at the time, we thought that it provided some context. What is a marijuana establishment, you know?
Yeah.
Right. But that seems like things are shifting and...
Yep, that makes sense.
You know?
That makes sense.
So, I think Sarah made a really good point about where these places are in town, but until we find, until we get Susan's circle map, do you want to wait?
I just volunteered, Lottie, to make it.
I think so.
On TV, I volunteered her on TV. I'll check, I'm sure she'll be...
No, you're right. I mean, I don't know, I think it's a good time to have this discussion at quarter of 10, you know, what are we going to do for the rest of the evening, if anything? I do think we should look at where, I agree with you, that it should be in conjunction with the buffer zones that we map out, and then put, also think about the proposed, the broad proposal that you put forth, so that we can think about what makes sense to narrow based on the different type of marijuana establishment. And thinking through that, and I'm not sure that the three of us, I mean, I think we would have to have this conversation again with Gary and Sarah, so to some extent, maybe we should just wait on that entire conversation. What do you guys think?
And what I can do is...
Yeah, well, I, I think it makes perfect sense, we're going to come back with a map, and circle's going to be every year, we're going to think, where can we put it outside the 500 feet? It's going to be more of a discussion with exclusion opposed to one with inclusion because so much part of the town's is going to be knocked out.
That's right.
And I can put together a list, I'll just go through my markups, and I'll make a list of kind of the open points that either were legal that I was going to get back to you on, or that Mary and I were going to talk to and get back to you on.
If this article changes too much, you know, are you going to talk about whether or not, this is going to be something that has to get reinserted?
I don't, I mean, I don't think right now any of the stuff that we're talking about is outside the scope, and I think that's why John, right, John worked with you on the legal ad and just, I know John worked with Mary on the legal ads to kind of, you know, the point is, do people talking about where they're going to go, what the conditions related to them are, everything, you know, I'd kind of, you know, at the end of the day, I have to defer to John on those, so I don't want to say, but I'm, I'm not uncomfortable that anything that was discussed tonight is outside of what people expect the board to be discussing related to this article.
Okay. I think the bottom line with this is we need to get it right. So if we, if we do encounter a scope issue, we're just going to have to deal with it. And I feel the same way.
And if it means shooting it back up to the selectmen and having them restart the clock, it's not the end of the world either. It might make it more difficult for, you know, getting a recommendation in the warrant, which is not ideal, but I think, like you said, you want to get it right.
We have to get it right.
They know it's important, they know we want to get it right. They know it's going to be...
So before, it sounds like we're starting to wrap up, but I want to make sure if there is any public comment on the time, place, and manner proposed warrant article, that we hear it. Okay, hearing none, it sounds like we're coming to a close here.
Thank you for supporting the entire meeting to those people left.
We need to, we need to talk about continuing these hearings specifically, right? Until when?
Right. Except, I think most of the people who remain are the ones who have no choice.
Our friends from advisory, lovingly call them.
One way to look at it, yeah.
So I have a couple of thoughts for the board.
Okay.
One option is February 5th, although one member of our board will not be present that night.
I am that one member.
And so...
That might change, but right now it's...
So the board could approach this two different ways. You could identify another time that Mr. Ramsey is available, or you could continue it to the 5th until we find out if we have to bump it again, or determine if you'll discuss it, you know. I think it's going to be a substantive conversation, so that's for the board to decide.
You know, I mean, I'm enjoying this conversation a lot, but if we need to... No, I am, actually, I am, seriously, I'm being serious.
I know.
But, I mean, if the 5th is okay with me, I'm not going to, if you will, we got to, I know we got timelines we got to hit, and we got a lot of work we got to do, so...
And I don't know, there's going to be so much substantive discussion, you may need to see a redraft, you may not be able to vote it that night, you may need a third meeting.
And we have to rewrite some of this stuff, tonight's going to take a little bit of time to rewrite. So the board, fortunately, you have one or two meetings a week, so you could, I know, you could, you could consider to put it to February 5th if you wanted to. You do have on February 5th another application or two, so you wouldn't start it until probably 8, 8:15, so it wouldn't give you the whole night.
What do we have that night?
February 5th.
Is that Sea Chain Marina?
Sea Chain, and then Redtail Lane subdivision, which either will have to be acted on or punted, and that's still not clear to me.
Okay.
So alternately, this board, you know, you're going to have to continue ADUs as well. So, looking at your schedule, we already have a meeting the 5th, we have a meeting the 6th.
Yep.
The next week, we have a meeting the 12th, which is a fairly busy schedule.
We're meeting with advisory on the 6th, but we don't have a planning board meeting on the 6th.
Correct. The planning board is going to advisory starting at 9. If you wanted to, you could fill in from 7 to 9 with, super, but Bill's away that week.
Oh, you're away both days.
And you won't have the advisory committee members here.
I think it's true that we won't get through it in one more night, so I think we should do it without Bill. It sounds like you don't mind on the 5th, and you will catch up with us at the 3rd meeting.
So since you three are here, can we talk about February 13th or 14th availability?
Sure can.
Is that a Monday?
The 12th is a Monday.
13, 14 is Tuesday.
13th, though, they have advisory committee meeting.
Is that vacation, no?
No, this is vacation.
But Victor's here, so we can talk about it in his presence. He prefers not Tuesdays, but...
Prefer not Tuesday in February, not Thursday.
So what about Wednesday, the 14th, Valentine's Day?
It could all be Valentines at the meeting.
I mean, I'm just...
It's usually such a special day in our house, so...
So it's for the planning board, so my question to the board is, a continuation date, because the next week is school vacation week, planning board does not typically have a meeting that week. I know members will be away, so...
I'm pretty sure I can do that date.
The 14th as a potential. So, so after the 5th, potentially, we could continue to the 14th if we had to.
Yep, I think that's right. And we might, depending on how far we get on the 5th, we might be doing ADUs on the 14th also. I know I'm jumping way ahead, but I'm just sketching it out.
That's the 3rd Wednesday of the month. You know, I think I'm, I think I've got...
It's actually the 2nd that month, but it will.
You know, I think, I think I'm volunteering with my son Scout troop, but I think we have a meeting that night.
Okay.
I can email it one morning.
14th, you think?
I think so, I remember Valentine's Day being, but I can let you know.
All right, so for right now, the conversation is continuing, the marijuana articles, all four of them, to the meeting of February 5th, they probably would not start until at some point after 8 o'clock that night, after your applications. Does that work for advisory, Monday, the 5th? Does that work for Susan? Okay, so is there, the board want to make motions?
Yes, I'll make a motion that we continue the hearing of the four proposed zoning bylaw amendments that we discussed this evening to Monday, February 5th, 2018.
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Anything else we need to discuss, Mary, before we adjourn? All right, motion to adjourn.
Mary, Susan, good job, thank you.
Yeah, thank you very much.
Thank you.
For hanging in there. Yeah, thank you. Thank you all for coming. Thank you for being here.
Mary, these are like...